One three-pointer, anywhere along the arc. All right. I'm ready.
He knows a guy who can help me.
I know a few guys. Yeah, put the picture in the back. I guess I'll have to go read that. I don't know, there's a plaque next to it. There's a plaque and everything. I'll read it later. No, it's all right, it's fixed. I'll read it on the way out. These are clocks are real focused. Their clocks are a little flash, don't they?
You know what, I bet it's on that little sign. Just a guess.
Run over there and look. Don't wait to start. It's really cool that you did that. It's even cold, I never have cold water. It's fantastic. That might backfire. Michelle, are you ready? Good evening, I'd like to call to order the September 21 Reno City Planning Commission. And if you would all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mark Johnson.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
Paulo Levis.
Here.
Charles Reno.
Here.
Troy Schneider.
Here.
Kevin Weiskie.
Here.
Peter Gower.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to item number three, this is public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, do you have any general public comment cards?
No, I do not.
Anyone wishing to make a public comment at this time? You can come forward, you'll have three minutes to make your comment. When you're done, if you could give Michelle your comment card. Before you start, if you could say your name for the record, please.
The Donald Dale Lewis is my name. I'm, uh, I'm likely, I'm camping by, uh, the river. The place knows that I, um, filled out, um, paperwork. And, huh, um, I'm, um, buying a water pump out of my own pocket because the, um, conditions are real dry down there. The, um, tames, Eddie, you know where that's at, right? Uh, the, um, conditions are really dry. So, I'm, um, buying a water pump. The papier, um, department, um, head is okay. They, um, told me what I needed and everything. And, um, they, um, put up trash cans that they, uh, uh, show up whenever they feel like showing up. The Latin, the, the gra- the trash cans overfilling everything else. Which technically causes problems for several people involved. Because when they, um, put them out there, um, they're not willing to dump them regularly. That doesn't make any sense. Um, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to make a public comment on this general public comment item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period and move on to item number four, which is approval of the minutes. I do not see any minute dates.
There are no minutes to approve, sorry.
Okay, no minutes. So we'll skip down to council liaison reports.
I have no reports from Councilwoman Beckus.
Thank you. So moving on then to item number six. This is our opportunity as a commission and as the public here tonight to hear a presentation from, um, Daniel Inouye from Air Quality on Ozone Advance, an idle reduction campaign.
Great, thank you, Mr. Gower. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the commission, for the record, Daniel Inouye. I'm with the Washoe County Health District, Air Quality Management Division. Appreciate the invitation tonight and look forward to discussing some, um, challenges that we have and some opportunities to, um, resolve those. This is essentially our air quality management process. What we do is we monitor air pollution levels and then we compare them with federal EPA standards for the different criteria pollutants. If we meet those standards and we continue monitoring and it's just a continuous circle there. At times, we may not meet those standards and that's where we need to develop air quality strategies. And once we develop those air quality strategies, then we will, um, implement and enforce those strategies as well. We're coming up with a challenge with the ozone standard and I'll get into that on the next slide here. Essentially, in the Trucky Meadows, we have two air pollution seasons. We have our wintertime season where we have the particulates trapped here in the valley. Most of that's from wood stoves and from fireplaces. And also, we have a summertime ozone season. And recently, we've been seeing more and more of a summertime wildfire season that also influences the fine particulates or the PM 2.5 and the ozone levels as well. You can see where we are with the different standards. We are having challenges with ozone and fine particulates. We're here to talk about ozone tonight. Right now, the EPA standard is 70 parts per billion and we're coming in at 72 parts per billion. Looking at the recent trend over the last 10 or 12 years here, not only have we seen changes in air pollution levels, but EPA has also strengthened these standards. They are required to review the standards, base their revisions or no revisions in some cases on the best available science. So there was an original ozone standard in 1979. In 1997, it was strengthened. In 2008, it was strengthened. And again, last year, it was strengthened. And you can see where we are as far as 72 parts per billion goes. Looking at the dip in the middle of the chart here, that can also be tied in with, um, a big dip in economic activity or the recession. So not only did the recession decrease industry, but it also decreased vehicle miles traveled. And as you'll find later, that, um, vehicle miles traveled and, and motor vehicles are the largest source of ozone precursors here. As you start to see the rise in the more recent years, you can tie that in with the recovery phase of, of our economy. Not only does it increase industry, but also increases vehicle miles traveled. Again, that connection between, um, vehicle miles traveled and ozone levels here. So essentially, what does non-attainment mean? The, the first bullet there says it all. Our air is, is harmful to breathe, especially for the vulnerable populations. Those would be the young or the elderly or those with existing chronic disease, uh, symptoms. Also, it can affect our daily activities. You'll remember a few years ago, when our air pollution levels were so bad, school outdoor activities were canceled or postponed. So that's how air pollution can affect our daily lives. Not only did the outdoor activities, um, were canceled or rescheduled, but sometimes they had to relocate or cancel football games. And even the Ironman triathlon was canceled because of an air pollution episode. It also requires us to develop an EPA-approved plan to achieve the standard. And also, another key element is can limit delays or stop economic development and expansion. The way that it can do that is that for new businesses, it may require additional air pollution control equipment. For existing businesses and industries, it may require that also. And it also, um, may require emission offsets. So that's part of the delay or the limiting of the, um, expansion. New businesses can, can, come in, but they would have to offset the emissions that they're gonna, gonna create, not only an equal amount, but an additional amount. So there is some air quality improvement with bringing in that new business. And also, if we remain non-attainment for these, uh, air quality standards for a long time, it can, in the long term, affect federal highway dollars. So how's ozone created? Essentially, it's a chemical reaction with nitrogen oxides, volatile organics and ultraviolet light. And that creates ozone. Some of the largest sources of NOx are essentially the transportation sector. Internal combustion engines, on-road, off-road, construction equipment. Those are the biggest sources of NOx in this area. Volatile organic compounds, very similar, um, with the mobile sources. And then also, like gasoline dispensing and, um, and solvents are another large source of volatile organic compounds. But by far, the takeaway message here is that transportation sector is the largest source of ozone precursors in this area. Here it is in the pie chart, you can see on the NOx side, the on-road mobile sources are, are more than half. If you combine that with non-road, which would be the construction equipment, planes, trains and off-road equipment, it's by far the largest category. So those are the areas that we're going to concentrate on and target for, for getting some emission reductions there. So some of our current strategies that we have to, uh, control ozone are smog checks. Those are probably the largest and the best, um, control strategies that we have in place right now. At the federal level, there's federal tailpipe and fuel standards that automatically will get, uh, benefits as the fleet turns over. And then locally, we have some local rules to address stationary engines, gasoline dispensing stations and other NOx and VOC sources. The other arm of our ozone strategies are the voluntary categories. And, uh, most of it, you can tie in with our Keep It Clean program. And what that does is it encourages alternative and active types of transportation such as white walking and biking and, and transit. Essentially, the goal for that is to reduce, um, the amount of, uh, use for the car, which again, is the largest source of ozone precursors in this area. And then other voluntary programs that, uh, kind of support and, and match up and align with air quality management goals would be Safe Raft to School emission, or excuse me, employee trip reduction programs, uh, low-income home energy assistance program. And then the occasional rebates that you may see from the power companies to basically get those inefficient appliances out of your house and get a more efficient appliance in there. So moving forward, we are, uh, very committed to the Ozone Advance program. Ozone Advance is voluntary partnerships between the Environmental Protection Agency, the Health District and then local, public and private stakeholders, such as the Planning Commission, such as the city councils, such as HEC and other trade organizations. The initiatives, um, the goal is to reduce, again, ozone precursors from the largest category of, of emissions and that would be motor vehicles. And in some cases, we want to eliminate, um, those tailpipe emissions through, through electric vehicles. And then also, another goal is to reduce energy use because it all ties together as far as the, uh, air pollutants that are released into the atmosphere and then forming ozone. And the, the strategies can be categorized into, uh, targeting technology, behavior and the built environment. So some examples of technology would be those zero emission vehicles, the electric vehicles, renewable energy, energy, energy star type programs. The behavior change would, again, be our Keep It Clean program, which encourages, um, shifting our, our culture from using the car as our first choice to, uh, looking at transit or carpooling or even combining trips can make a big, big difference in our overall, um, ozone levels. And then, uh, key element here is the built environment. Some of the strategies that we have that tie in with the built environment relate to the master and regional plans, smart growth, complete streets, Todd just, Todd districts or corridors and, and other elements within here. We think that these are going to be the long-term benefits that are going to get us to attaining not only the ozone standard, but maintaining, uh, some of the other standards as well. So the built environment, it determines our transportation choices. I said, I'd start out with influences, but as I was putting this together, it, I, I think there's a strong connection that it determines our transportation choices. It determines, uh, how many car trips we take, how long the trip is and our per capita vehicle miles traveled. Definitely affects our air pollutant emissions, ozone levels. And then also is a strong link to chronic disease rates and other health indicators. Land use decisions can be forever. So essentially, these decisions that we make today are going to be around with us for decades and decades. And we may have some opportunities within our lifetimes to, uh, improve those, but it's, it's very critical that we get it as good as we can on the front end. And then the cumulative indirect impacts, uh, more of the operational impacts, again, related to vehicle miles traveled and, uh, the amount of trips that we take by car. Here's a little excerpt from the American Planning Association Policy Guide on Smart Growth. The way a community is planned, its land, development patterns, transportation options or community design bears heavily on the health of those living here. This was geared for public health, but you can easily use the same statement for environmental health or, and even economic health as well. So with the Ozone Advance program, we have top-down support from, uh, many of the elected bodies in this area. City Council adopted this resolution earlier this year, as did the Regional Planning Governing Board. The Health District adopted a similar resolution, RTC. And also, it, air quality is one of the Planning Commission priorities that, that, uh, your commission had, had set forth, uh, for this fiscal year. It was also adopted by the City of Sparks and Washoe County, uh, BCC. And also with, uh, these, um, planning priorities for the commission, air quality, uh, this year was separated out, but you can incorporate the air quality impacts or air quality concerns in just about all of those priorities that, that you established as well. So they are very interconnected. So how ozone advance ties in with other plans? Definitely, the master and regional plans will, will set the direction for, um, how and where we grow and develop and even redevelop. It's a key plan and, and many of the findings that you have to make tonight or, and in the future, have to conform to the master and regional plans. There's also some of these co-benefits that tie in with transportation plans, sustainability plans. We work closely with the Sustainability Manager here at the City of Reno because many of our goals and the way that we achieve those goals overlap. So it, it's, it's very consistent and there's, uh, many co-benefits tied in with that. Also, it benefits the Community Health Improvement Plan and even the Urban Forestry Management Plan. So altogether, all these plans and everything that, uh, our stakeholders do equal a positive collective impact. So moving forward, here are some basic, uh, some real simple, uh, conditions that could be applied to projects that can make big differences, uh, in our ozone levels, uh, today and in the future. One is our Be Idle Free Campaign. It's part of our Keep It Clean campaign that we initiated earlier this year. Essentially, it can be applied to the construction phase of a project where we have the heavy construction equipment that, um, that would be real easy to minimize the unnecessary idling time that, uh, that we have out there. So essentially, not only does it save emissions, but it also saves wear and tear on the equipment and the bottom line. It will save money as well. In the operational phase, the anti-idling or idle reduction campaign could be, uh, tied into projects for, uh, delivery trucks and even applying to the public who, who visit those businesses or, or industries. And, uh, again, it reduces unnecessary idling and saves money. That's probably the strongest message. What we like to hear or what we hear at, uh, the Health District, what resonates more is that, hey, you know what, we're gonna have, um, fewer emissions and cleaner air quality. Another, uh, condition that can be applied to projects right now would be the employee trip reduction programs. Again, it's, uh, the goal is to reduce the number of cars by encouraging carpooling, vanpooling, transit and all, other alternative means to get our work done with fewer trips. RTC has a very successful vanpool program and they have many other tools that can, um, can complement carpooling and, uh, different schedules. So RTC has a toolbox that's just ready to be, be used by more businesses in this area. So some other conditions that support ozone advance and other programs. And these are, um, conditions or, or, um, programs that are in place in other areas or, or strongly researched and have found to have, have, uh, great benefits as well. Zero emission carpool or bike parking requirements for, for businesses. The second one is related to electric vehicles. If, if we feel that electric vehicles are going to be more of the future of our community, then we have to be ready for it. California's Title 24, I believe, their energy code or, uh, building code requires that new houses be prepped, not installed, but just prepped for a dedicated 40 amp, uh, 240 volt service, um, for electric vehicles. And on the construction side, it's, it's very, very minimal. It just has to be prepped, uh, just with the raceways and conduit, it doesn't have to be ready to go, but just prepped. Having that in place makes electric vehicle charging at home a much more viable and economic option. And if you follow that path with that extra additional load, then you need to make sure that the neighborhood is, uh, has that capacity as well. So these are all things that, that tie in, that, that, um, have to be considered when you look at these individual projects and the cumulative effects. EV charging stations are very popular now and, um, I think when, like, when one casino put them in, they all put them in. When one shopping center put them in, they all started to put those in. So it gives more options, uh, as far as clean commutes or clean transportation goes. Truck, truck stop electrification is a big one throughout the country. With our, um, freight corridor of Interstate 80, we have many trucks that come through here that, uh, have quite a bit of emissions when they stop over here. At times, they idle and sometimes they, they don't, but many times they do idle. If there's truck stops with electrification hookups or electrical hookups, then that's, becomes part of the equation as well. And even when it's not installed, just having the infrastructure in place can make a big difference to, to make that move later on. Energy Star and green building codes, pretty self-explanatory. Bike-friendly businesses. Reno and Sparks has been designated as a, uh, bike-friendly city as a, the, at the bronze level, I believe. And they, they have a similar program that can, uh, reward or acknowledge businesses as well. So those are types of programs that are out there. Safe Raft to School Plan for New Schools. As digging through the, uh, Public Works Design Manual, there's a, um, section in there that talks about Safe Raft to School Plans for new and, and remodeled or expanded, uh, schools. That can easily be applied to the residential sector when, uh, X number of houses come in. We should be asking, how are they going to get to school? Many times, if they're a further distance away, uh, it would be bus. But if they're within one, two or three miles, we need to make sure that they have a safe path or if there are some gaps or just some small amenities or infrastructure improvements that can make a big difference in the way kids get to school. Boy, that can make a, a big difference. I know that when some of the review comes through, it talks about capacity of schools, but I think just asking that next question of, okay, those 62, 60 students or so, how are they going to get to school? And if, again, um, if the answer is, is buses, then that's it. But when they're around the school, we need to encourage and, uh, provide them opportunities for alternative and active transportation. Wider sidewalks and shared use paths around, um, schools can also improve, uh, walkability. Just that connectivity and, and making schools, uh, a focal point for the community and the neighborhood. Because good neighborhoods have good schools, great neighborhoods have great schools too, so. At some point, we will be building some new schools and these are some things to consider. So we don't have this congestion in the morning and in the afternoon with, with parents picking up their kids. Some other things to consider would be low-impact, uh, parking lots and streets. Cabela's, I think, is a pretty good example of how they main, manage their stormwater and at the same time, um, provide, uh, water for their, for their plants. That helps with, uh, the heat island effect and has these air quality benefits as well. So there's a lot of co-benefits that tie in with ozone advance. Solar-ready building design. Same thing, you know, if these new buildings and new construction are prepped for solar, whether it be the engineering to support the infrastructure or just some of the electrical work, that can make a big difference to, um, make these things viable in the future. Cool roofs, green roofs, cool pavement, essentially, um, helping the heat island effect. Clean landscaping and construction contracting. That is one of the things that, uh, occur in some of the areas that have really, really bad air pollution, where they'll require clean diesel equipment, clean diesel construction equipment on their projects. And going back to that, uh, pie chart, the off-road mobile sources are, are large contribution, are large contributors of ozone precursors as well. And then also, uh, also need to consider if, uh, we have more trees, you know, we need to make sure that they are, uh, air quality friendly. There are some trees that, uh, will emit more volatile organic compounds than others. So some trees, well, trees are not created equal, so the right tree in the right place can make a good, uh, big difference. And then there's many, many more, uh, conditions and, and programs that we can apply to this area. And again, solutions for clean air and I, I wanted to emphasize that clean air is, is just one of the many benefits of, of this program as we implement these, these conditions within the projects. Also improves public health, reduces vehicle trips and per capita vehicle miles traveled, increases a tree canopy, saves energy, improves environmental and health and stormwater management, reduces heat island effect and increases economic development and most of all, improves quality of life. So that concludes, uh, my presentation and I'd be more than welcome to answer any questions.
Daniel, thank you so much. Commissioners, questions?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask a couple of questions. One, when are they gonna, uh, bring more electric buses into the area?
I believe that's coming soon. RTC has applied for different grants, including some Tiger Grants that is going to, uh, increase the number of electric buses, I think, four more. There's a number that's, that's, they have applied for and received an award for. And that's tied in with that Fourth and Prater Project, uh, which ties in with those corridor studies. So, including that, in the corridor study helped make that grant, uh, awarded to this area. And also, RTC is doing a lot with, uh, trying different buses. You saw the different, um, the double-decker bus and the extra-long electric bus. So they're very, um, uh, progressive and very interested in, in getting electric. electric vehicles and electric buses into this area.
Final question. I see a lot of vehicles plated with a classic vehicle license plate that aren't even looking like they want to be on Hot August Nights. I called the governor's office, was switched around to a couple of people, found out you can go ahead and apply to get your classic vehicle license, and you don't have to get your car smogged. What's with that? I mean, let's let's get real now.
Yeah, yeah. That is a big concern. At the last legislature, it was, there were a couple of bills to remedy that. It ran into a buzzsaw, let's say, at the end, where it basically got tabled. There was a study done by a subcommittee of the different parties within the state to to look at that. Came up with recommendations, and there are some recommendations related to the classic vehicle plates. And what is a difficult thing with that is it wasn't written strong enough to be enforced, where it's basically, it's an honor system when they do apply for that and they get that. It's just an honor system. So that is a a big concern. Those vehicles are, even when they meet the smog check standard, they do emit a lot more than than today's current cars. So that is on our radar screen, and it is an area where we're looking to close that loophole.
Commissioners, other questions? Commissioner Reno?
Quick question, Daniel. How do, how do wildfires? How does that work with the ozone trends? And how is that, are you taking it out of your equations? How do you deal with wildfires in the particulates?
Right. The largest source or the largest pollutant related to wildfire is is smoke, which consists of the fine particulates or that PM 2.5. Depending on the chemistry and the makeup and the distance of the fire, it can affect our ozone levels. And we've seen that many times. EPA has a path to take some of that ozone data related to wildfires and exclude that when we do that calculation of 72 parts per billion. So when we take those out of the equation, it's still air that we breathe. And we do take concerns and and measures to protect the public. But for regulatory purposes, there is a path to take that out. We are working with EPA on their new, it's called an exceptional events rule. It's very, it's, the intent of the revision was to streamline it. We're finding some difficulties with the streamlining process. But yes, there is a path to take exceptional events out of the equation when comparing to the air quality standards.
Thanks.
Daniel, I have a question. You know, we, at the commission, we look at projects or proposals at different stages and different levels of development. You know, there's the master plan phase, which is this big picture look, zeroing down a little bit more, you know, we'll look at zone changes, zeroing down a little bit more. We'll look at special use permits. You mentioned a lot of conditions. Do you feel that putting these conditions in at any particular phase in a project's life is more advantageous than another? And how might you suggest, you know, that happens?
Well, definitely, the largest impact of of projects is going to be related to automobile traffic. So the key part is to place that type of project in the right location. So at the master plan level, having the the land use pattern, so it gives us more options and more choices as far as transportation goes, is the best place to provide the input at the next level as it starts to come in. Then it can be fine-tuned to reduce those automobile emissions as well. So the master plan is definitely a great place to put these issues in. And I think, well, I know that the next item is is related to the master plan. So incorporating those thoughts about air quality, environmental health, public health and economic health in some of the discussions, I think, will help raise the awareness of the implications of putting a good project in a bad location or or a bad project in a bad location. So reducing motor vehicle emissions is the key. Many, many co-benefits related to that. Master Plan Process, I think, a great place. Having it supported or conformed to the regional plan, another great checks and balance. And then when it gets to the Planning Commission or to ComDev staff, great time to add those conditions to ensure that the project is a good project.
Daniel, are you a resource for us? If we have questions, we can reach out to you?
Absolutely. We welcome that and welcome talking to the Planning Commission or or staff as well.
Right. Thanks so much for your time tonight.
Hey, thank you for inviting us, and and we look forward to talking with you soon.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, moving on on our agenda, we'll move down to item number seven, Master Plan.
Hello, Brianna Wolf, and I'm joined by my colleague Sienna Reed. We are both with the City of Reno. Thank you, commissioners, for having us here again for an update on the Master Plan. This is an action item. We are bringing four directional documents in their draft form for you to review and hopefully give us conceptual approval on. Three of the documents are addressing the policy organization of the Master Plan. And then the final document is an approach to land use. We'll go through each of these. I'll take the first two and then hand it over to Sienna. For each document, we will do a brief review of what the document is, share the overall direction and obtain your feedback. We will have discussion after each document, but then ask for one vote to approve the conceptual direction of each at the end. And again, want to note, these are starting points. Each of these documents will need additional further refinement, public input, et cetera. So starting with the first document, we have included a outline of the Master Plan. So this really is a table of contents, a preliminary table of contents. The first two items, the introduction and plan foundations, are going to act as an executive summary. For anyone that picks up the plan, they will be able to read those and understand what the Master Plan is about and what the direction that the city would like to go in. Sections three through five are really the meat of the plan. The Goals and Policies section will have all of the citywide policies in one location. It will be organized according to the Guiding Principles and Goals, which we brought for you to approve back in July. The policies underneath those Guiding Principles and Goals are being worked on right now, and we will have draft document to circulate to you later this year or early next year, and we'll go through public input on that. The growth and reinvestment framework is really what we're going to be focusing on today. So we've included this overall outline just to couch the documents that we will look at today in there. This is where the land use categories, as well as land use map live. A new concept of the Structure Plan will live, as well as the design principles that relate to the Structure Plan, and we'll go into more detail on that shortly. The final meaty section is the Implementation Section. For every policy in the plan, we will have an implementation strategy or action coupled with it so that we are able to track our progress and ensure that the vision is realized. So with that, and again, noting that this is the first start and really provided for context, the names, organization might continue to evolve as we go through the update process. I wanted to take a brief pause and see if there were any questions or desire for discussion on the outline before I move on to the Structure Plan.
Commissioners, questions?
Okay, great. Pretty straightforward. All right, so this next document is the Structure Plan. This is a new concept for our Master Plan. It introduces a level of hierarchy above our Master Plan Land Use Map. You can see there is an illustrative map of the Structure Plan on the left-hand side of the slide. The shaded-in areas introduce a level of land use typology above the land uses in the Master Plan, and these help illustrate generalized development patterns at a higher level. Also, we will have a hierarchy of centers and corridors that help refine our current system of transit-oriented development corridors and continue to help us refine the accessibility of the plan and hopefully consolidate some of our existing center, corridor and neighborhood plans into these typologies. The other benefit here is that we will have coupled design principles for each of the centers, corridors and land use typologies. So that means that we will bring that extra level of design thinking to all areas of the city, not just the ones that have existing plans now. Referring to these, we do have three levels of centers that we are proposing. These will help regroup and reorganize the existing nine center plans. We have four levels of corridors that will help reorganize the existing nine existing corridor plans. And then the six land use typologies will organize the existing eleven neighborhood plans. We will go through that reorganization in the next document with Sienna. But what are these levels of centers and corridors? So there are three center categories. Regional centers are thought of as attracting not just members of Reno, Sparks and Washoe, but but even outside the region. They really are a destination such as downtown and our convention center. Employment centers are just that, areas of economic activity. And then neighborhood centers are a new concept that we're introducing in reflection of our community's desire for a more walkable neighborhoods. And so these are really neighborhood-scale places where people can go for their day-to-day services. In terms of corridors, we do have four, and I'm just realizing I've left the fourth one off. So our first one is urban corridor. These are really a higher-intensity area focused on areas that have existing transit and a walkable pedestrian character. Suburban corridors may also have transit, but they are lower intensity and more auto-oriented. Neighborhood corridors reflect, again, the this desire for more neighborhood-scale retail and connections within walkable neighborhoods. And then the fourth corridor category that's not on the slide is Greenway Corridors. So these would be places for recreation, trails within the city or ways to connect to trails that lead to outside the city. The six land use typology categories, I'll go through the ones on the left first. So we have two employment categories proposed. One is industrial logistics. It's pretty self-explanatory where manufacturing, warehouse types uses would occur. The innovation employment area is really sought, thought of as being for areas around academic centers where research, development, business incubation, product incubation would occur. Mixed-use areas are familiar to you, they're mixes of uses. The three categories on the right are all for our neighborhoods. So our central neighborhood typology is for the neighborhoods that are generally within the McCarran Loop. They do have a historic character and are valued for their compact, walkable urban form. Our outer neighborhoods tend to be outside of the McCarran Loop. Are are older as well as more newer suburban neighborhoods. And the foothill neighborhoods are also outside of the McCarran Loop, but have that extra topography element of being located on steep slopes or drainageways or areas of fire concern. So these are the land use typologies. The the reason that we are proposing the Structure Plan and these higher generalized categories is to help us streamline the plan. We're able to take the 24 existing individual corridor center and neighborhood plans and group them into these new proposed categories and at the same time expand those best practices and design thinking to other areas of the city. It also allows us to address compatibility concerns with what land uses should be next to each other. This is another level above the the Master Plan Land Use to use as guidance. And it also does provide that framework for the design principles for each of those categories proposed. So with that, I will pause and ask you for any questions, clarifications, concerns, what works?
Commissioners, questions?
And I'll remind you that we will be looking for your approval of the concept of including the Structure Plan in the Master Plan and then your preliminary approval of the categories proposed within.
Okay.
All right, wonderful. With that, I'll hand it over to Sienna.
So moving on to our third directional document, this would be the reorganization of our existing center, corridor and neighborhood plans into the proposed Structure Plan categories that Brianna just walked through. And so when we think about our existing center and corridor plans, these are really translated to the Structure Plan category that is most aligned with the intensity and function of that area. So providing a bit more of a nuanced approach to the underlying functionality of our centers and corridors. Our neighborhood plans are also translated to one of the three Structure Plan Land Use typologies, those associated with the residential neighborhoods. And again, those land use typologies would be connected to design principles, really providing an opportunity to stretch those design principles to like neighborhoods, providing for principles across our entire city, not just necessarily those with neighborhood plans. I do want to note, it's very important here, that there will be an opportunity to translate those policies that are unique to our existing neighborhood plans into the design principles. However, as part of the Master Plan process, at this point in time, we are not seeking to develop new neighborhood-specific policies. We're really trying to work within that framework of our new land use typologies. So what are the benefits to this reorganization? Brianna touched on it a bit. We will be able to standardize and move or remove some of the redundancy that currently exists between our individual center, corridor and neighborhood plans. That's going to help us simplify the document for end users, the public, staff. We'll also have an opportunity through this reorganization to replace some of our plans that are a little bit older with best practice policies, really being able to expand what works about some of our more robust plans to other areas that have similar characteristics. And again, expand to all areas of the city and build on the previous work that's already been done in terms of refining the vision and function of existing centers and corridors while also creating that enhanced consistency. And I'll talk a bit more about that previous work as we get into more detail here. So giving you just a a quick overview of what is actually proposed for our existing centers. In terms of our regional centers, the Downtown Regional Center and the Convention Regional Center are proposed to stay regional centers. They will have that Structure Plan designation and their own specific design policies, given their unique consideration within the Master Plan itself. The majority of the remaining regional centers will transition or propose to transition to employment centers, whereas some of the other centers actually will not have a designation or would transition to the new concept of the neighborhood center. Moving on to our existing corridors. Here, we're really building on the work that was done previously to refine transit-oriented development corridors into primary and secondary corridors. So the slide will probably seem very similar to this in terms of the translation of primary corridors to urban corridors and then also our secondary corridors to suburban corridors. Looking in more depth at our existing neighborhood plans, the proposed Structure Plan designations are fairly intuitive here. Most of our existing planning areas that are in our older central neighborhoods have the proposed Structure Plan designation of central neighborhood. And those in the outer areas would either transition to the outer neighborhood typology or the foothills neighborhood typology. Again, their topography being really a primary consideration on how that designation is proposed to be applied. So again, what we're looking for tonight on the reorganization is really your conceptual direction or approval of the conceptual direction. Do you approve of the concept of actually reassigning these existing center, corridor and neighborhood plans to the Structure Plan categories? And do you approve of that preliminary reorganization to the category, the Structure Plan categories on the previous slides as a starting point for refinement outreach? And so really trying to note there that the reorganization recommendations are preliminary at this point. They will continue to be refined as we continue to gather feedback from internal and external stakeholders, the community, on the Structure Plan and its application. So with that, are there any questions on the the reorganization?
Commissioner, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
I I guess my only concern, and I understand that we will have more refinement, is the UNR being moved to an employment instead of a regional center. I think that it probably should stay into a regional center, but I think that there is more refinement we can do there. is more refinement we can do there.
That's definitely one of the comments that we are starting to hear already, so we will, you know, log that, and that's definitely going to be part of the ongoing discussion about, are these structure plan designations the right one for these specific geographic areas? So we'll continue to gather feedback and bring that refined feedback back to you at a later date.
Other questions? Commissioner Hawkins?
We're talking about non-applicable. Two slides back, Reno Stead Corridor, NA. I don't like the CNA. Can we do existing or something instead of NA? Because that just, the people out there are applicable.
Absolutely. We can definitely make that improvement to the slide. It's a good catch for that planning area.
Do you want to just clarify why?
And just to provide that additional clarification on why the NA currently exists, the Reno Stead Corridor Joint Plan is a joint plan unto itself. It is created in the regional plan, and we jointly manage that plan with Washoe County. So while we are proposing to move towards citywide land use categories associated with that plan, the actual removal, retirement of any type of boundary is a process that would need additional work with external stakeholders.
Listeners, other questions? No.
So moving on to the last directional document that we have for you tonight, this would be the proposed new land use categories. And generally, these updated categories are intended to provide a variety of benefits. They're intended to give us a bit more clarity in the mix of uses, plans citywide, give us the ability to evaluate citywide land demand and capacity now and in the future, kind of building on the work that's been done with our housing and employment reports thus far. Also work to support the reorganization that we just discussed of our center corridor and neighborhood plans, and reflect overall patterns of land use within our planned unit developments while allowing the underlying planned unit development handbooks to carry forward. So being able to provide a bit more of what our existing land use looks like for each of those areas on the master plan land use map. The benefits associated with the updated land use categories and their application include bringing a clear vision to the land use map by translating that special planning area, master plan land use designation, to citywide categories, being able to see that broad look at what the future of the city is planned for, and also to help address some compatibility issues with more specific land use categories. Some of those issues being urban-rural interface compatibility issues, context-sensitive infill, and then also where we have employment lands adjacent to residential. Just a quick look here on this slide of the actual land use categories that are proposed. There are 12 on this slide in varying colors. Currently, our master plan has 10 land use categories. As proposed, you can see that we have four generally residential categories, large lot, single-family, mixed residential, and multifamily. Generally, these categories are proposed to allow us to have a bit more nuanced application of the policies, or excuse me, of the categories. There are three mixed-use categories. At this point in time, downtown mixed-use, vertical and horizontal mixed-use. Some of these category names may change, their application may change as we continue to work through the downtown action plan work. But for now, this is their current draft form. Two employment, specific employment-related categories, mixed employment and industrial. And then the remaining categories, public quasi-public, unincorporated, transitioned, parks, screen rates, and open space are very much continuations of categories that we currently have and that you're familiar with. So again, we are seeking conceptual direction. We're looking to see if the Planning Commission approves of the concept of moving from special planning areas to showing the citywide land use categories. And we're also looking for your conceptual approval of the proposed draft land use categories as a starting point for that additional outreach that's planned, noting that we are transitioning to more variations of residential and mixed-use categories, as we talked about on the previous slide, and having dedicated employment commercial categories. And again, the big disclaimer, that even with the conceptual approval this evening, the land use categories will be continued to be refined as we go forth, do additional outreach, gather public feedback. So again, are there any questions, clarifications, associated with the land use categories?
Not seeing any.
Okay. Well, the next steps then. After this evening, what we will be doing is posting the directional documents online. We plan to update the frequently asked questions section of the Reimagine Reno website to begin to cover common questions as they arise, so please feel free to forward those to us so we can continue to update. And then we are going to begin our public outreach process to gather feedback more broadly. The approach here is two-pronged. We have a broad strategy where we will be using a online survey to cover the breadth of directions presented tonight, as well as those key policy choices that were presented in July, where we will be making actual decisions on in December. And we do anticipate that that survey is going to launch mid-October, so stay tuned. It's going to be out soon. And then the second prong of the strategy is really trying to gather feedback in a more targeted way. We will be doing this using in-person public focus groups on the proposed neighborhood typologies, and then their associated design principles, which we'll also be bringing forward to you as well. That in-person public focus group is anticipated late October, early November. Don't have a date set yet. And then we'll also be continuing with our presentations to civic groups, particularly the development community, and that is something that we remain committed to on an ongoing basis and will continue to do. So with that, if there aren't any other questions, what this slide shows is a possible motion for you to approve the conceptual direction of the preliminary organization and land use approach materials for the updated master plan, and the bullet's really referencing what we were discussing in the previous slides throughout the presentation.
Okay. Before I ask for the motion, I just want to say that, you know, I think that the shortness of the breadth of our direction tonight is, in a lot of ways, evidence of the extent of the breadth that, you know, staff is putting into the effort. So I think we can all appreciate that. Mr. Wyskey?
When you're ready for a motion, Mr. Chairman, I'll be glad to make it.
I am ready for a motion. Thank you.
With that being said, I'm not going to read the entire motion. I am going to say so moved.
Thank you.
And before you ask for a second, I would also like to jump on your comments about complimenting staff. This has been going extremely smoothly for many months, and if you guys keep it up, it's going to be really easy for us to continue to follow along and understand and to provide quality comments directly to you, indirectly via emails, whatever, as we get information. So keep up the good work.
Well said. A motion of a second.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you very much.
Great job.
Moving on on our agenda this evening, we'll move down to item 8.1 under Public Hearings. This is recommendation to City Council and case number LDC 17-00001, Sierra Nevada Academy. And we will start with a presentation from the applicant's representative, if we could.
Good evening, Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. I feel kind of insignificant talking about a zoning map amendment after following Daniel, who's talking about saving the world and air quality, so it's tough to follow and act like that.
And if you could just tell us your name for the record.
Yes. My name is Larry Ryder. I'm the president of Charter School Property Development, based out of Henderson, Nevada.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to request a change, a zoning map amendment on a property located at 5600 Fox Avenue, which is, which is at the intersection of Fox, Mount Babcock, and Mount Bismarck. Presently, there is a two-story, 16,000-square-foot office building located on 3.61 acres. It is currently zoned industrial, and we would like to broaden the zoning to public facility, which would allow us many different types of uses for that property. If you look at the, let me see if I can get to the...
Here, Larry.
Just click.
You can just scroll.
Okay.
Or not.
There we go. This might be, this might be helpful. So again, we have a two-story, 16,000-square-foot building located in an area that is highly mixed-use. We have the Nevada Terawatt Facility directly to the north. We have an elementary school to the north of that. We have residential located to the east and to the northwest in a small pocket of industrial. Just to give you a little brief history on the property itself, this building was, is currently owned by University of Nevada at Reno. It was constructed in 1960. It's been vacant approximately three years. From 1970 up until 2013, it was used by the University of Nevada as their desert research institute. So, and they were using it for basically administrative offices and some labs. The proposed use, and this is not definitive, we don't have an arrangement yet, but we are looking at the possibility of relocating an existing charter school. This would be Sierra Nevada Academy. Sierra Nevada Academy was actually the first elementary and middle school charter in the city of Reno. It's been around since 1999. It has approximately 300 children, and it's located approximately two miles south of this existing site. If we do end up consummating a transaction with Sierra Nevada, we would propose keeping the existing building, which, I don't know if there's a better picture of it, but it actually looks like a former school. We would renovate the building. We would put in sidewalks on both sides of the street. We'd repave the parking. We'd make it really quite a beautiful structure. Right now, it's more of an eyesore than anything. And I think that part of the problem, why this property that's been on the market for three years has not moved, is because of the zoning itself. It's zoned industrial, but quite frankly, it would be better off as an office building for a law firm, a professional firm, or something like a school. I think the fact that it's atypical of a warehouse or a manufacturing facility has led to its demise and its vacancy these last three years. Other than that, I think it's pretty straightforward. Are there any questions specifically for us as the proposed owner? Right now, we have the property in escrow, and as soon as we, if we are successful in getting the zoning map amendment, we would proceed with design, working drawings, submitting to the city for plan check, and proceeding with construction with the idea that this facility would be open in June, call it July, of 2017. Any questions?
We will get back to you on the questions. We'll take a presentation from staff, and then we'll bring it back to the commission and ask you questions at that point, if we have any.
Thank you, Chairman.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Thanks very much for the context and the presentation. Evan, presentation from staff.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, the members of the commission, Evan McKenzie, Assistant Planner. I think the applicant did a pretty good job of covering the basics of the issue. The proposal is for a rezone or zone change only. The actual development that they would like to do, although associated with this, is not part of the rezone request. The request, of course, is to go to a public facility, which would allow a primary or secondary school as an outright use. The industrial zone, of course, does not. Larry referenced the existing building. You can see it a little closer here on this image. And then this is the building from Fox Avenue. As mentioned, it was constructed, I believe, by the Air Force and then used by UNR for a number of years, although maybe not for classrooms, but at least as an educational facility. And so the site is developed, although not all of it. I'll slide back here a tiny bit. The remaining area here, of course, on the south and east, is not currently developed. We have no proposal from the applicant, or anybody else for that matter, at this time to do anything on the remainder of the site. No issues were raised by staff counter to the proposal. It was taken to the Neighborhood Advisory Board, and we didn't have any real questions or issues. And so nothing came up during review by staff or the NAB or anybody else to suggest that this was not a good idea. And so with that, staff would certainly support the proposal and recommend a motion for approval.
Okay.
That's it.
Thanks, Evan. So this is a public comment item. Before we get to the public comment, I'm going to ask the Commissioners for disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Wyskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Commissioner Hawkins, I visited the site, as well as served on the Board of Trustees for the school from 2000, 2002. My wife was a teacher there until 2008.
Commissioner Gower, I visited the site.
Commissioner Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Schneider, as did I.
Commissioner Reno, as did I.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, I am going to open up the public comment portion of this item, ask for any public comment. Michelle, do you have any public comment cards?
No, I do not.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment. Not seen anybody coming forward. Bring it back to the commission at this point for questions. Commissioner Hawkins?
Evan, if I could, is there any indication at this time what the traffic model is going to be for in and out of the school when it happens?
That was not directly associated with the zone change, and so we did not do any traffic impact studies. I couldn't say what the traffic was under the previous use. I don't know how much of the building was actually occupied.
Thank you.
I'm going to follow up on that, if you don't mind. Bill Gall, Senior Civil Engineer. We did look at the basic trip generation rates for the existing, the IC zoning and the trip generations for public facility. They are very similar, and we assumed that with the change in zoning, that the overall traffic impact of the site would be similar with the different uses.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson. Evan, don't run too far. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in then? I've got a question for Bill Gall while Evan is in a sidebar.
Please do.
Thank you, Bill. Is there, I don't understand the benefits of school traffic and children on Mount Bismarck to the west. Why isn't staff promoting egress and ingress to the east on Mount Babcock?
Well, at this point, it's just a zone change. Until we have a project or, you know, a development to look at, at that point, we would look at the access and circulation and to ensure that we have adequate access and circulation at that point.
But we won't get a chance to see it at that point. That'll be staff, correct?
If it meets, you know, our code, it will be staff review.
Okay.
And I'll jump in here. Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. Evan was going to do this, but the establishment of a school in this district, or in any district adjacent to residential, whose own property requires a site planner view. So that's a 30-day review process administrative. It is noted to the surrounding neighborhood with postcards and posted on the site. It does not come to hearing. It can be a It can be appealed to the hearing officer.
Okay. So, we won't see it again if we approve this, and we won't have an opportunity to discuss redirection of flow of traffic through an industrial-zoned area into the residential area?
If it's a school.
If it's a school and we approve that zone change tonight.
Correct. There was an amendment to state law in the last session that limited how we could regulate schools, and we were required to remove the special use permit process for schools. So, that was changed to a site planner view, and that is in all three jurisdictions now for schools, to establish new schools, even adjacent to residential-y zone property.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you letting me jump in.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to go to Commissioner Johnson, and then we'll get back to you, Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Evan, quick question for you. Within the past year, we had a zone change come before us for most of the University of Nevada Reno facilities instead, to change them from public facility to industrial-commercial. I'm sorry, my mic's on. Sorry, I'll lean forward. I'm wondering, was this one of those parcels that we recently had a zone change for, for the University of Nevada Reno projects? This was within the past year.
Evan McKenzie, Assistant Planner, for the record. And honestly, I don't know. That predates my time here. Perhaps our director could answer that better.
I'm not sure.
Okay. I bring it up for the very specific reason that when, and it's from what the chairman, or what they brought up, there was a bunch of zoned properties that were zoned public facility because the university owned them, regardless of whether that was what their use was. So, that was why I was questioning if this is why it fell in that category. This is probably going to be a question for discussion afterwards. So, if you don't have the answer to that, then I would have to look it up elsewhere.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske, I can answer to that because it's on the east end of the airport, of the state airport. It is not in this area.
No.
The ones that we saw earlier.
That's not true. Because I do remember, and I remember when, because even Commissioner Levis was talking about it, and I drove around and looked at them, and they were all on the south side of the airport.
Yes, they are on the south side.
Which is where this is. I just, I think this is one of those, if it's not, it's directly adjacent to one. So, that's...
Well, that was one that was postponed, that we're waiting to hear. But the ones in the last year that we have made a decision on were on the south side of the airport and east of this project, east of the existing development. You came in off a military road, and those were the properties right there to the right, where the old train, the fire training facility used to be. And those are the ones that UNR, in the last year and a half to two years, has brought before us.
Because I know there were seven sites up there. So, that's why I was just questioning, but that's...
That's more...
Understood. That's, we'll discuss. I think the question's been answered, at least to my satisfaction.
Okay.
And if there is more discussion, we'll get there. We're in discussion in a minute. Commissioner Hawkins, do you have a question for staff?
Actually, a question for the applicant. At the time, serving as the Board of Trustees member with the Sierra Nevada Academy, the academy was its own beast. Yes, it was related to the state of Nevada. It was looked over by Washoe County, but it still had its own Board of Trustees. And that makes it a different beast when it comes to an SUP. So, that's something we need to talk about tonight before we even talk about a motion, is do we do an SUP because of the way that Washoe County looks at charter schools, as well as the state of Nevada? Or do we go on with what we're doing?
Okay, understood. Commissioner Hawkins, you have the applicant here. Do you have a question for him related to that?
Are we still looking at the same thing? You still have your Board of Trustees that governs the school?
That is correct.
Okay. But you still come under the auspices of Washoe County School District. It's just you have a lot of leeway.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Commissioners, other questions for staff or the applicant before we get to discussion? Evan, do you want to say something?
Evan McKenzie, Assistant Planner, for the record. I thought this might come up, although not necessarily that type of question. But, so, I have the table of permitted uses in the public facility zone. And I thought, just for the commission's reference, you might want to know that rolling down the list of uses that are permitted outright, now, this is exclusive of the site planner view process, of course. Primary school, public or private. Secondary school, public or private. School, non-traditional, secondary, public or private. So, all of those uses as schools, as far as the use is concerned, would not require a special use permit. But yes, the site planner view process would still kick in. So, I thought that might help to clarify your question.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Evan. I'm going to ask the commission to start discussion, and then maybe I can get Claudia to jump in with any sort of updates that you may have. What are we looking at?
I guess, if this is what I'm thinking it is, parcel group D is the site we're talking about. And is this...
That's correct.
So, I guess then, I'll ask Claudia from a staff standpoint. We approved this as a zone change from public facility to industrial-commercial, and now, we're being requested to change it back.
We are. Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager, for the record. So, at the time that this application came through, UNR was, if I remember correctly, was kind of trying to tidy up their parcels that they were trying to sell. And so, they felt that the IC zoning was more marketable at that time.
I guess I'll start discussion. So, at the time this was done, and this is why it came up to me, when we put that these parcels predated the zoning, if I remember correctly. And so, when our, the last round of zoning was put on it, they were put as public facilities simply because they were owned by the university. So, I guess, moving forward, and as my point of discussion, we're being asked to put back something that we already changed because the use that we thought was going to happen there is not seen as desirable as the use that it actually allowed beforehand. So, I guess that's my starting point on this discussion, is that we, they changed it so that it would be easier to sell, and now, they're changing it back so they can actually sell it. So, in terms of how we look at it, I think if nothing had happened six months ago, this wouldn't even come before us for a zone change, let alone a special use permit or a school that was developed there.
Commissioners, do you want to respond to that? Commissioner Reno?
Sure. Yeah, I was thinking about what you said there. I think we have to look at this in its context today. I mean, I think there was decisions made in the past, and we had different criteria, different things going on, but now, we have what's before us. And I see it as, okay, yeah, we're switching back. It may be a little different going back and forth, but given what's presented before us and kind of the intent, and I know we're talking about zone changing, we're not talking about exactly what, because there's a lot of entitlements that will come with that. But, I mean, I don't necessarily have an issue with what we're seeing now personally.
I would tend to echo what Commissioner Reno said on that, that, you know, conditions change. I think in this case, it's been a fairly short period of time for us. So, I think that's kind of a little bit of a rub, but understanding that, you know, the conditions do change, even though we are talking about a zone change and, you know, trying to, you know, plan a little bit ahead here. And, you know, it feels like we're planning to, a little bit of reactionary planning. Frustration. Commissioner Wieske?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, you know, it, that's not necessarily the concern that I have in this request before us tonight. To me, if zone changes come before us every month for the same piece of property 12 months a year because somebody wants, has an idea, and they want to do something with it, more power to them. It's the way that we look at it when it comes before us. And when it came before me before, as I prepared to make my vote on this parcel, it made sense to me that public facility property to the north was a university site, an educational laboratory, teaching facility. It's adult-based. It's not the elementary school of Washoe County to the north of the university's building that they're working out of now, the Terawatt Building. So, there was a buffer when it came to approving this to an industrial use, and the property to the south of it is an industrial use. To me, that is a real transition. I still have heartache over the fact that we might be putting kids in traffic at pickup and drop-off times onto a street that is zoned industrial. And we've seen it many times since we approved a lot of charter schools and some business parks here around Reno that aren't necessarily safe. There's a lot of heavy traffic moving around in them. They preclude certain industrial uses from going in or require them to come in for a special use permit or, you know, going before staff for additional reviews. And I think we're setting ourselves up for that same thing because we cannot say, you know, if this use is approved here, now, you're going to have an industrial use to the south of it, whatever that industrial use is. Now, you may preclude that property from being used as industrial property. We just got a report from the city that says we don't have enough industrial properties for the future. So, how does, so that's a conflict. Then, we're going to dump this traffic out and onto industrial road, and instead of having efficient traffic, we're now going to slow down commercial vehicles to 15 miles an hour for eight hours a day when they're trying to move product in and off of that street because it's all industrial to the west. So, I'm not sure that I can make certain findings here, and I'm kind of being, I've shared my opinion with that. I want to hear what the fellow, my fellow commissioners have to say and maybe change my mind or help me make some findings. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieske. Commissioner Hawkins, do you want to respond to that?
I understand what he's saying. I'd love to see it northbound traffic in and southbound traffic out and start that 15 mile an hour as you're coming up Bismarck. That's what I'm thinking of, but we don't get a chance to do that. And that's a concern that Bill needs to address probably on this project. But I will, I will get on a soapbox here for just a second. A charter school is unique in many ways. And with my time there, over eight, nine years, I went on expeditionary learning excursions that were incredible. This school does some incredible things. And I've looked at the building, and I think it's ideal for what they want to do. And I just wish we had more say in the way that traffic was going to be because then, we can make our findings the way they need to be made. But the school itself does a heck of a job, training kids, teaching them, going out in the field on expeditionary campouts. It's just an incredible school, and for them to take over that property, I think is the best thing for it. Thank you.
Claudia?
Thank you, Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. And I just want to remind the Planning Commission that before you tonight is a zoning map amendment. It's not a project for a school. It is just a review from going from IC to PF. This does not guarantee that a school will go in the site. It opens it up to all the uses allowed in the PF zone.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson, I guess to respond, Commissioner Wieske, the, I know where you're coming from with this with respect to where it sits with the industrial area around it. The problem I have is that this is a very unique industrial situation. I travel this road almost once a week to go up there for various projects that I'm working on. And what I see is very limited access to heavy industrial traffic on Mount Anderson. I think most of what we're seeing, and this map's a good point of it, a lot of that traffic diverts off at Lear and goes over to the larger warehouses and a lot of the logistics. There's really just the three buildings that you see on the south side of Mount Anderson that are there. The rest of that road accesses smaller-scale work. I think that the concerns that we have are justified. But this parcel sits immediately adjacent to residential. It sits basically one parcel south of an elementary school that also has to access on Mount Babcock. So, looking at it from a public facility as opposed to industrial-commercial, I'm hesitant, especially, and I think that the one that, looking at the findings in terms of what we have to look at from a zone change, there was two of them that struck me as appropriate. One was that item D, which talks about reducing the consumption of energy, products and materials, especially in light of what Daniel was telling us earlier tonight. This is an existing building that gets used. If we leave it as industrial-commercial, there's either going to be additional development on that property in order to accommodate it because it's basically an office building. So, the public facility function allows that facility to be used in its existing condition as opposed to leaving it as industrial-commercial, where I think there would be additional development required. The other one that I'm looking at is item H, which talks about developing an efficient arrangement of transportation and public facilities. It's not often we get public facilities coming before us. It's charter schools, and that's about it. Everything else that we seem to be seeing is more of a commercial development. It's more of a, or a residential development that may or may not have public facilities associated with it. So, I think, while I appreciate the need for more industrial space, and we can have that discussion as we move forward, I think based on the location of this one specifically and what's there, I could support going back to a public facility definition with it because I see that as more appropriate, just based on where it's at, than where, than the industrial-commercial because of where it's at and what it is. So, I guess that's my comment. So, hopefully, that maybe spurs some additional discussion.
Before I ask Commissioner Wieske if he's reconsidered his statement earlier, commissioners, other input, comments? Additional discussion? Commissioner Wieske, did you want to respond?
No, I, yes, I will respond, and with all due respect, Commissioner Johnson, now's the time to look at it, not after it's been approved. And I'm still... When you re, when you reference orderly traffic and pedestrian flows in condition H, it can be done in such a way as not to interfere with the industrial. But in a zone change, we don't know that. It's not a project. It's not a charter school, Commissioner Hawkins. It's not. It's a zone change. Okay? It's not, it's not anything but a zone change to PF. That's all we're talking about tonight. And I don't know that this is appropriate considering the industrial uses on two sides of it, being developed or undeveloped, the potentials that they are appropriate for PF zoning. And so, no, I haven't changed my mind, but that doesn't make it a bad thing. Thank you.
Commissioners, if there's no other discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion, and we'll see where this goes. Who would like to make that motion?
Commissioner Johnson, I'll make that. In the case of LDC 17-0001, Sierra Nevada Academy, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend that City Council approve the zoning map amendment by ordinance. And I can make all of the findings, especially, as I pointed out, finding C, excuse me, D, with respect to the reduction of consumption of energy. Okay?
Have a motion? Is there a... Is there a second to that motion?
Commissioner Hawkins, I can make the findings and I'll second that motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion before I call for a vote? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Thank you. Let the record show that the motion carried six to one. Moving on to Item Number 8.2. This is LDC 17-0006 Maverick 900 West Fourth Street. Presentation from the applicant, Garrett, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Members of the Commission, Ms. Hanson. For the record, Garrett Gordon with Lewis &amp; Roca. Tonight representing Maverick Inc. for a gas station. The specific application is two special use permits for a location at Fourth and Keystone. Tonight with me is Craig Romwell from Maverick and also Stacy Huggins from Wood Rogers. And we're here as a group to answer any questions may you have any, Mr. Chairman. Orient you to the site, we're talking about a location which I think we've all driven by many, many times, the southwest corner of Fourth and Keystone. The project area consists of currently three parcels. And here's the current condition. There has been a gas station use there since the 1960s, operated there for about 50 years. It closed up and has been abandoned since 2013. There's been a fire since it's been closed. There's been homeless issues. The city required that fencing got put up. Frankly, I'd put it in the category of blight right now. One of our main corridors off the freeway. I don't think it's an intersection that any of us living in this community like to drive by in its current condition. There's been questions about the ownership, and frankly, two are owned by the City of Reno. So how we can move forward with the zoning application, given that ownership structure? Let me walk you through it. I also, for the record, represent OPO Ranches LLC. They own this corner parcel, again, on the southwest corner of Fourth and Keystone. We approached the city requesting to purchase these two City of Reno parcels. This parcel is where the old Texaco Convenience Center was located, convenience store, excuse me, was located. This back parcel that's adjacent to Retrak is where the old Burger King was located. If you remember, that was located and was relocated across the street on Fourth Street. We approached the city and entered into, through the help of my esteemed colleague, Mr. Greg Salter in the DA's office, negotiated an economic development agreement with option to purchase. So currently, OPO has an option to purchase those two Reno parcels. And it was deemed an economic development project for a couple of reasons. One, there was an agreement to demo the current Texaco facility and excavate those underground storage tanks. Two, it'd be redeveloped into another gas station, a Maverick. Maverick plans to enter into a long-term lease with OPO to redevelop this corner. Three, there's some thresholds in the agreement whereby Maverick, as the operator, has to meet certain revenue thresholds in order to maintain the property and operate and meet those economic development findings. Employ 15 to 20 employees at all times. And Maverick, again, plans to invest about $4 to $5 million in the project. The option period ends in 2017. So that's why we're before you tonight. In order to move this forward and operate a gas station, two things have to happen from a land use perspective. Number one, it's bringing back a non-conforming use. Since 2007, when the Fourth Street corridor plan was approved, gas stations were no longer allowed. We believe, and as you saw in the staff report, staff believes that it's still an appropriate location for a gas station. And two, reduce the floor area ratio. Obviously, a gas station is not floor area ratio intense given there's fuel station, convenience store, and a lot of vehicles driving throughout the location. So that's a request tonight. The zoning, just a quick zoning map. It's zone mixed-use, surrounded by mixed-use and Retrak. Residential adjacency is not a problem. It's over 750 feet away. The site plan, so here's where the location of the store would be oriented. The front of the store would face westerly. The back of the store would face at the intersection. I got to stay, and just for the record, Heather, on behalf of staff, was great to work with, but sure a stickler. I mean, she really had us amend our architectural elevations many times, given this intersection would be looking at the back of the Maverick. So it's beautiful in the back and it's also beautiful in the front. Also, we had to focus on, and again, went through many reiterations, of pedestrian amenities and pedestrian access. The Fourth Street corridor plan requires pedestrian access. And given the orientation of the building, it took a little while to come up with a good concept, but we did. And there's pedestrian access through here along Fourth and through here along Keystone. The fuel islands are located here in the middle of the property. They're considered starting block alignment, which is certainly different than, I would say, the alignment of where Texaco used to be. I remember trying to get in there and given they had two columns, it was very, very difficult to get in and out. The starting line approach certainly will accommodate more cars, more vehicles, and I think in a lot better pattern. There is, and I'm going to end this presentation with three amended conditions. But one is related to Keystone. And right now, there are two access points off Keystone and three access points off Fourth. Staff and RTC strongly urge and are strongly in support of minimizing and getting rid of three, the two access points. So now we're going from three to one on Fourth. And on Keystone, two to one. But there is still a question, and since the staff report came out, we've understood there's been some concerns about, is this left-in here still going to work? And/or is this left-out here still going to work? Our traffic engineer believes it will. But we agree as a community partner and in working with staff that, and I'll read the condition for the record, but there'll be a look-back traffic study. Once this is built, between 30 and 60 days of the operations, we'll have to do a traffic study and submit it to staff to look at to make sure this movement is in fact working. We believe it will, so we're confident in doing a look-back to confirm that. Landscape plan, trees, trees, trees. I think this intersection is certainly barren with trees. We're required to do 46 trees. We're in fact going to do 48 trees. There's been a question of the percentage of non-columner trees versus the shade and canopy trees. We started at kind of a 60/40 split. And within the last day, we've been able to bump that up. I know the Urban Forest Commission has a goal, along with the City Council, of trying to get more canopy and shade trees into our Reno area. So we're voluntarily agreeing to bump up our percentage. So we're bumping it up from 60% of shade canopy trees up to 75%. Now it'll result in eight additional trees, eight additional canopy trees rather than as set forth in the staff report. Elevations, all of you, I'm sure, have seen Mavericks. We have about 15 in our area right now. This will be 16. Great community partner, not only for gas, but the many amenities they have in their convenience store. It does look a little different in that, you know, this location is mixed-use. And so there were horizontal integration issues. There were aesthetic issues that we had to work with. And give Heather credit, she was tough. But we were able to come up with a plan that kind of worked for everyone. So there's the front of the store there. Signs, go back to the site plan. There'll be two signs, one located... One located in this corner that is facing west to east. And one located along Keystone that's facing north to south. The sign facing north to south along Keystone, and as you all know, sign heights are based on traffic speeds. We're allowed to do a 25-foot sign along Keystone. And we're going to do a 25-foot sign as a proposal, which is consistent with a 25-foot sign at Chevron, Jack in the Box, certainly compatible with the area. This location here, given there is a higher speed limit along Fourth Street, 35 miles per hour, we are by right allowed to do a 35-foot sign. But in order to, one, acknowledge we're a non-conforming use, so we shouldn't have, and I would say, demand that we should be entitled to everything by right, we are trying to make some concessions with respect to the surrounding area. The Ben's Liquor sign is 30 feet. So we are, you know, agreeing to knock our sign down from 35 to 30 to be compatible with the sign across the street. So here's the two renderings. This one will be 25 feet along Keystone. This sign will be 30 feet along Fourth Street. And this is the first time Maverick has come out with this design for a sign, given these unique mixed-use design standards. They really had to think outside the box to get staff to support it. And I understand they're going to use these in other jurisdictions now because they look pretty cool in their opinion. And I should note, for the record, Cinnabon has not signed an actual contract yet. So there's no guarantee there'll be a Cinnabon there at this point in time. Floor plan, I know really not a part of the findings for a use permit, but there is a change to a condition we would like to make, and I think we have a good rationale for it. Condition Number 10 limits alcohol sales to 10% of the store sales floor area. The store sales floor area is currently 2,970 square feet. Maverick has this unique concept, which is called a beer cave. And then this corner is where their beer cave is located. Not only is it to enhance the customer experiences for marketing, but security. And I think especially at Fourth and Keystone, avoiding beer runs, avoiding minors, having security cameras. It really is a concept that would be considered kind of best practices in convenience stores. So when you look at the square footage, 2,970, our kind of beer cave area here is 375 square feet. So it exceeds the 10%. We're about 12 or 13. So we're asking that this be raised from 10 to 15%. Not that we're trying to sell more liquor, not that we're trying to stock our shelves with more liquor, but just by virtue of the design. I have some more slides, if necessary, to give some further elaboration. But you'll see that the middle of this area is not going to be covered with alcohol, that it's all along the shelving around the perimeter of the room and these two coolers. So there's only about 160 square feet of shelving. But given the whole area is counted, we'd ask for, and I think we're not setting a precedent, if you agree with me tonight, to increase that from 10 to 15%. So in summary, we request approval with all staff conditions, except the three I mentioned, to increase the percentage of the non-columner trees, the shaded canopy trees by 15%, which is a total of eight trees, that we cannot exceed 15% of the floor sales area for alcohol sales. And then regarding the Keystone left-in, left-out, this look-back provision, let me just read it on the record, Mr. Chairman, just so it's clear. "A traffic study shall be performed by the applicant between 30 and 60 days after the opening of the gas station to solely evaluate the operational characteristics of the Keystone Avenue driveway specifically related to the left turn ingress and egress. The traffic study shall be reviewed by the Community Development Engineering Division." This is Bill Gahl, and he has seen this condition. I believe will put on the record, he supports it. "In the event that the traffic study recommends any reasonable operational improvements to the left turn on Keystone Avenue, the applicant shall be required to complete these operational improvements identified in the traffic study within 120 days following that final review." So we'll operate for a period of time, see if it's working, submit the traffic study. If there are additional improvements, there'll be a very quick turnaround to make those improvements. So with that, Mr. Chairman, we're here for any questions and really do appreciate your time tonight.
Okay. Appreciate the comprehensive presentation. Staff, Heather, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Gower and Planning Commissioners. Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, for the record. The applicant's representative did a fabulous job of covering most of the points that I was going to discuss with you this evening. This special use permit request is to reestablish a non-conforming use. The process for that would be if Planning Commission makes a recommendation tonight for approval, it will be reviewed by City Council at a later date. Hopefully, that'll clear up in a moment. So as the applicant discussed, is there anything I can do with that, Michelle? There we go. The existing facility doesn't meet any of our mixed-use design criteria as far as access points, building orientation, things like that. The gas station convenience store use was in effect for about 50 years and closed in 2013. So this request is to reestablish the gas station portion of the project. A convenience store is allowed by right in the West Fourth Street Transit Corridor. As you can see on the landscape plan, there are areas that were added, the parkway strips that were added along Fourth Street and along Keystone are the reflection of elimination of existing driveways. So this project will effectively move from five access points to two. And they're ideally located to be as far away from the intersection as possible. With the discussion of the proposed condition, it would be Condition Number 17 as laid out for the traffic analysis post, you know, establishment of operations. Staff does support that and will allow Mr. Gahl to address any questions you might have related to that condition proposal. The applicant did work with staff regarding the enhanced tree canopy cover and has agreed to the 75% non-columner trees. And as far as Condition Number 10 goes, with regard to alcohol sales area, I believe that if the applicant were to agree to specifically identify where their alcohol shelves are within that beer cave, they would meet the 10% maximum allowed square footage area for their sales area of alcohol. So if staff would recommend some sort of additional language to Condition Number 10 that would specify the actual square footage within that beer cave allowed for alcohol sales, I believe the applicant said that would equal about 160 square feet, which is well under the 10% allowed as Condition Number 10 is proposed. The Ward 1 NAB was generally in support of the proposal. Their primary concerns were related to traffic, pedestrian safety, and sign design. The applicant has worked with staff to modify their sign design to the current proposal that's in your packet. I do believe that the sign proposal that was produced on the overhead was a previous version. The applicant did further revise their sign design for the 25-foot tall sign to modify the cabinet size to coincide with the base size. Staff has not received any requests or inquiries from the public. And we would support this project with recommended conditions, including the modification to Conditions Number 6 and 10, as we discussed, as well as the addition of Condition Number 17. And we do recommend that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to City Council. I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much, Heather. And great job as Garrett said on the staff report.
Thank you.
Very comprehensive. This is a public comment or a public hearing item. I do have one public comment card. It's from Garrett, so I'm assuming that you made your comment. Before I ask for public comment, I'm going to bring it back to the commission and ask for disclosures this time. I'll start with Commissioner Reno.
I visited the site and was in communication with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Schneider, as did I. As was I.
Commissioner Johnson, as was I.
Commissioner Gower, just for clarification, I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative about it.
Commissioner Hawkins, as was I.
Commissioner Levis, as did I.
Commissioner Wieski, as did I. And also, I want to disclose that I own commercial... Um, and also, I wanna disclose that I own commercial professional office property, which is outside the noticing area, but it is two blocks south of here on Keystone. After speaking with our legal department, um, it was agreed to that I should disclose that, and no matter what happens with this project, it will not affect the value of my property and will not affect my vote tonight.
Thank you very much. So I will ask, uh, at this point, if anyone does have any public comments, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public comment period for this item. Michelle, do we have any other public comment cards?
No, we do not.
Okay, I'm gonna close it, bring it back to the commission for questions. Who'd like to start? Commissioner Hawkins.
Question for Bill Gahl. What do you see on the entrance and exits here? I'm, I'm having a problem with coming out the east side and making a left there because of traffic.
Um, for the record, Bill Gahl, Senior Civil Engineer. Um, they did do the traffic study was, and, um, was provided by Slegi, and we, we reviewed that. With that, they, they didn't identify any access issues or concerns with that. They do have adequate site distance. Um, the distance is, um, of the new approach, that south, that, that Keystone approach, does meet all of our access management standards as far as distance away from an intersection. Um, so with that, we, we did approve it without any recommended conditions, further review and, and discussion. Again, we have, we have included that, that look-back provision to take a look at that Keystone Avenue driveway, uh, after it's opened up, see if there are any existing condition, any issues with that at, at peak hours during that study. If we find that there are operational concerns with that, there are, there are ways to limit that and remove that and maybe limit that to a right-in, right-out if we do see operational concerns with that.
Commissioner Wiskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The applicant's representative, Garrett, please. Here, if you could, um, go back to the floor plan on the overhead that you were showing us with the beer coolers, beer cave, excuse me.
If I can just go to here.
Perfect, thank you. Let's start with a clarification. The area that you have highlighted in yellow, um, that is the perimeter for the beer cave and alcohol sales, which is how you come up with the square footage of, or, or, excuse me, not you, but staff comes up with the original square footage of over two hundred square feet? Is that correct?
So I just spoke to staff, and I think we may now have a meeting of the minds on interpreting that ten percent. Um, I believe...
Well, I, you may have had that conversation, but we didn't have it? So I'm, I'm headed in a direction that, at least on record, we can get it on record.
Sure, no, I appreciate that. So my interpretation was, my understanding was that the ten percent included that whole room.
Okay.
Um, the ident, the area identified in yellow is where the shelving will be, and here's kind of an overhead of where shelving for the alcohol will be located. So if you take the, if you take the, the room in its entirety at three-seventy-five, we are excess of ten percent of twenty-nine seventy, which is two hundred and ninety-seven. I'm told by staff that they are willing to interpret and clarify on the record that it wouldn't be the room, but it would be the shelving or the coolers for alcohol. So we can live with that ten percent condition with the clarification that it's not the room, but it's the actual shelving or the cooler that's holding, uh, the alcohol product.
Okay. And that's great, 'cause you just kinda helped me get to where I was going with this. Um, 'cause my question is for, for Claudia. Um, and Claudia, and only because you're the remaining staff member that's been here long enough to remember this, um, we had a couple of convenience stores in the Wells Avenue area where we actually asked for, um, lines to be put on the floor for, uh, the area of alcohol to be designated for sale so that they didn't exceed their ten percent. Do you recall that?
That was a long time ago, but yes, I do.
Good. At least we can both remember a long time ago. Um, so, and to help you with that, that, that's another way of doing it also, and for my fellow commissioners that weren't here during those, uh, proposals that came before us, there is a way of looking at it to help get it within that ten percent. Thank you, Garrett.
Thank you, Commissioner, appreciate it.
Claudia or, um, Heather, before we leave that topic, can you just confirm your conversation with Mr. Gordon on that topic and just close the loop for us as the commission? Commissioner Wiskey alluded to, um, a couple of projects that we've seen before where we set that ten percent. Confirm that those are the same as this and your interpretation is the same.
Okay. Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner for the record. Yes, um, as far as previous interpretations have gone for alcohol sales square footage uh, within the retail space, uh, we have interpreted in the past that only those areas that contain alcohol products would count toward that ten percent, uh, square footage allowance. Um, in this case, the, um, building plans would have to have a, an identifying, um, label that show where the alcohol, um, where the alcohol products would be stored and made available to the public. And I think Chair White, or, excuse me, member Wiskey had a good idea as far as delineating that on the floor.
And so even though, I, I just wanna make sure that I'm clear on this, and I apologize to the other commissioners, um, for belaboring this, but, so I'm clear, this area is, it's a beer cave and it's dedicated to alcohol sales. We are interpreting the square footage of the area where the beer is stored. So if someone goes in there, it's not the area where they're standing that's counted, it's just where that beer is on the shelf.
Where the product is located, correct. So in this case, that, they called it a beer cave, and that might be the sign that's posted, you know, as you're entering the cooler, but it is in effect a cooler with, uh, cooled beverages available. Uh, so if there were some sort of identifying marks that locate where the, um, alcoholic beverages may be stored and available for sale, that would be the square footage that would count toward the allowed ten percent of alcohol sales floor area.
Mr. Johnson?
Mr. Johnson, can I belabor it just a half second more?
Please.
Um, I, I just wanna clarify, based on what I'm hearing, are there actually any modifications that need to be made to this condition? Because it basically says in the condition that prior to the issuance of the license, they shall provide suitable verification to staff about this, meeting the ten percent. Is that, just looking at it from staff standpoint, is the language acceptable with the ten percent in there, suitable verification to staff? Or are you looking, you or the applicant, looking for additional clarification based on this discussion?
Staff's comfortable with the condition the way it's stated. I'll let the applicant's representative respond.
Based on the representation made by staff on the record of how they would in fact calculate the square footage, we're comfortable in withdraw any changes to chap, uh, to condition ten at this point in time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess I'll leave it up to discussion afterwards if we wanna change it.
Commissioners, questions on other topics? Heather, can you clarify on the signage? It wasn't clear to me, and I just wanna make sure that it gets on the record, the... Are we looking at any sort of digital components to these signs?
Oh, yes.
And if so, where?
Thank you. Um, Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner again. Uh, the digital component, there is a digital component to these signs, and where they would be located is the, the actual price location. So, uh, these three locations on each of the signs are digital. Um, because this is in a high, a high, uh, accident area, we did, uh, add to the sign condition language that stated that it needs to be, any digital, um, copy area does need to have effectively a static message, uh, no flashing video, things like that, that could possibly distract drivers as they're, uh, approaching this intersection.
So it's just the numbers on those?
That's correct.
Thank you. Commissioners, other questions? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Wiskey.
In the case of LDC one-seven dash zero-zero-zero-zero-six, Maverick, nine hundred West Fourth Street, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to forward a recommendation of approval of the special use permit to City Council, subject to the conditions, including the modification to condition number sixty-six and the addition of condition number seventeen as read into the record by the applicant's representative. And I can make all of the findings.
Thank you. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Commissioner Reno. I'll second the motion, and I can make all the findings.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All is in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks. Good luck with your project. Moving down to item eight-point-three, LDC sixteen dash zero-zero-zero-seven-six, Reno And we will begin with a presentation from the applicant's representative. No yawning.
Good evening, Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group. I know we have a long agenda tonight, so I, I think it makes sense, uh, to keep this as brief as I can. Um, we're requesting, uh, a self-storage facility, a special use permit for a self-storage facility on, uh, Gentry Way. Uh, this, uh, this isn't the best graphic, but, uh, it's this hatched area here. Uh, you can see it's a very long and narrow lot with a single street frontage on, on Gentry. Uh, the site is, uh, currently vacant. Uh, its only recent usage has been a car storage lot. It was an overflow lot for, uh, the Toyota dealership. Uh, I, I think what that says to me is that it's, it's not a site that's suitable for a real mix of uses. Uh, that, that car storage use was temporary. Uh, we're proposing a permanent use for the storage facility. Uh, I don't see a lot of other uses fitting in there. There's only a hundred feet of street frontage. Uh, it's not a prime retail site. Uh, so I think, uh, I think this use, uh, will be an improvement over the currently vacant site, uh, that tends to, uh, collect trash and possibly vandalism. Uh, we, uh, I should point out that, uh, the north property boundary, uh, right here, um, I'm gonna switch this to the site plan. We are, um, adjacent to a, um, mobile home facility. Uh, we are not, however, subject to residential adjacency code, uh, because there is no residentially zoned property around our site. Uh, but it's worth noting that, uh, if, even if we were, we would still comply in terms of building height, uh, traffic generation, noise generation. We're well inside, uh, those, uh, those limits. Uh, in fact, the buildings are pretty short. Uh, they're, they're less than nine feet tall. There's a single access point off of Gentry to gated access. The, the whole site is, uh, is, is fenced, uh, with a single gate at the front. Uh, so very low noise generation, uh, low impact, uh, real quiet, uh, uh, not very noticeable use. Uh, so I think it's an improvement over the, over the, uh, the currently vacant site. Um, I think I'm gonna leave it at that and, and let people ask questions. Uh, I don't think there's much more to cover. It's, uh, it's not a staffed site, uh, be very quiet. Customers would have, uh, would have access during, uh, daytime, early evening hours, and that would really be it. Uh, so I'm gonna turn it over to the city, and, uh, I'll talk more if anybody wants me to. Thanks.
Okay. Thanks very much. Evan, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Evan McKenzie, Assistant Planner. Um, as noted, we have a proposal for a mini storage warehouse facility. It's a fairly small facility on a fairly constrained lot. It is zone community commercial. As noted, it is near a, uh, mobile home park, but that is not zoned residential, and so the adjacency standards do not apply. Um, the big issues that come up with virtually all of these that come before you are the same. Site circulation, architecture, specifically articulation, and landscaping. Uh, we have worked with the applicant, um, on the architecture and have plans that certainly appear to meet the requirements for articulation. Um, there is a small remaining question regarding site circulation, but it was not enough to warrant a specific, uh, or recommending a specific condition of approval. It is something the applicant will most likely be able to address with their final building plans. Um, and then there is a, an outstanding question with landscaping, specifically regarding the, uh, detention ditch at the north end of the site. Um, that can also be addressed through a recommended condition of approval that is in the staff report. Uh, this did go to the Neighborhood Advisory Committee. Nobody had any real concerns. It's, the site is in between, um, an older retail medical supply store and, uh, the offices for a taxi company. Um, the two uses to, on both sides are pretty low impact as, as this should be. Um, I did get quite a few calls from the general public on this, um, although amusingly, most of them were concerned because they thought the site was, that the storage facility was going to be located on their property. And once I assured them that it was not, everybody was okay. Um, and as an added note, I just want to, um, extend a, a thank you to the applicant for being very accepting of a few, um, minor noticing errors that caused some delay on this project. And so, uh, on behalf of staff, I do apologize to the applicant for that. And I believe that is all, unless there are any questions.
Thanks very much, Evan. We'll get back to you on the questions.
And then, um, I do have, so if there are, I'll just leave these up here. So this is the site, this is a little cleaner than, uh, the applicant's aerial, and then we do have some, we have the, uh, the conceptual architectural, I think that, yeah, designs, and then the, uh, site circulation, so in case questions come up about that.
Okay.
I will leave us there.
Perfect. Thank you. Before we get to public comment, I'll ask the commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Wiskey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site.
Commissioner Levis, as did I.
I visited the site, talked with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Gower, I visited the site.
Commissioner Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Schneider, as did I.
Commissioner Reno, as did I.
Okay, thank you very much. This is a public hearing item. I will go ahead and open the public hearing, ask for any public comments. Michelle, do we have any public comment cards?
No, we do not.
Okay. Not seen anyone jumping up. I'm gonna close the public comment period for this item, bring it back to the commission for any questions. Mr. Wiskey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For staff, please. Evan, can you just tell me real quickly, on your page six of your staff report, you say that it's the property to the north, the mobile home park is urban residential slash commercially zoned today?
Um, that is the master, Evan McKenzie for the record, that is the master plan designation. However, the zoning is community commercial.
Okay. So does community commercial allow for residential? Use?
It, I'd have to look at my book. Um, Claudia, do you recall offhand?
Yes, it does. It allows for multifamily.
Okay.
The, while I can't speak to the, the mobile home park that's north of there directly, I can say that many of the developments, such as that one in that area, do predate current standards.
Um, but in a CC, you, a person has an allowable use of a mobile home park, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I would have to, well, I'd have to double-check my code. As I said, mo, many of these developments in the area predate current standards, and so they are...
Right, that's, and I, I'm, I'm aware of that, and that's why. Um, and my question to you is, Evan, is, as you've noticed over the last, um, month or so, we've had a lot of storage units come in. I noticed you didn't limit the hours of use or put in hours of operation as a condition, and yet we have had discussion on every project that's been before us of limiting it so as not to be a distraction when there's residential adjacency. You didn't do it on this one, why not?
We did not. That did not come up as an issue at the staff level. Um, I am aware certainly that in some of these other cases, we have conditioned the operating hours, um, from a staff perspective. I'm, I'm not opposed to it. Uh, you might want to ask the applicant to clarify the proposed hours of operation and if there are suitable restrictions on those hours.
Okay.
To answer your...
To answer your earlier question, mobile homes parks are not allowed in a commercial zoning district. Multifamily is, but not mobile homes.
Okay. So...and Claudia, this may...you may want to answer this one, but Evan, I'm going to direct the question to you first. Since the Mobile Home Park was there first and the age of its zoning, or it was allowed at whatever given point it was constructed, is the incoming use then should be considerate of what is existing around it, correct? Is that the way you would look at this?
I would certainly agree. And I did speak to a number of residents in the area who, once they were assured that this was not on their property, they had no concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Derek? Here's my concern, and you know what my question is, is about limiting the hours of operation. My concern is that this is not a 24-hour managed, staffed facility. I understand the key code system and it doesn't require full management. That's fine. But to provide some reasonable hours of operation due to existing residential use to the north, whether it's in the current day master plan or not, is irrelevant to me. Have you spoken with your client? And would there be reasonable hours of operation that we could come to this evening?
Yes, I think so. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group. You don't entirely surprise me here, Kevin. Yeah. I talked to the owner, and they would agree to a 9:00 p.m. closing, same as we've done with similar uses recently.
Okay. All right. I'll bring that up during our discussion then. Thank you, Derek. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson. Derek, one more question for you, if you would. I had Commissioner Wieski's comment written down, but I had the second one that I think was the other issue that came up, which was with respect to lighting. I didn't see anything either in the staff report or documentation about lighting. Are you proposing any pole lights? Or is it all building-mounted lighting for the project?
In general, the lighting would be the minimum consistent with safety, whatever the police department tends to prefer. Although in this case, the lighting was reviewed under a previous SUP for the car storage lot, and that lighting is still in place. So it will continue to function as is.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners? Additional questions? Question? Mr. Wieski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How'd you know that?
I had a feeling.
Did you? I'm on a roll tonight. Commissioners, I would like to offer up an additional condition of limitation of hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Sunday through Saturday, similar to what we've done on the last few storage units. And I believe, especially since it's...as you heard me say, it's unmanaged, I think that would...will be reasonable considering we do have residences to the north.
Okay. Question on that?
Commissioner Reno, that seems reasonable to me. I was actually thinking 6:00 a.m., but 7:00 is probably just as well.
Early risers, 6:00 a.m. opportunity. Anyone want to make that a motion?
Mr. Chairman, before I do, Commissioner Johnson, do you have anything you'd like to add on the lighting? Because normally, we would also have that condition of dark skies and lighting and...
And I guess...and I appreciate you mentioning that. And maybe this is a follow-up. If there's already lighting in place that's conditioned elsewhere, I'm not so sure it's being modified as a part of this project. So I was not sure that that was something that we would be able to add in if it wasn't actually being proposed to be added as a part of the project. So if we can put that condition in there just for the dark skies, but I don't know if that would require a modification as something that wasn't a part of the project, I'm not so sure that's...you know, if it's already been conditioned.
I guess my thought...Commissioner Wieski, my thought on that is there's good lighting in there now that doesn't... it seems to deter some problems for the neighborhood. And nobody has complained about it. We heard Evan say that he received several phone calls. He discussed it with several nearby neighbors, whether they're commercial or residential. We don't know. It doesn't matter. But no complaints of any kind once they realized it wasn't happening on their property. So maybe you are right. Maybe it's best left alone, but I didn't want to make a motion without your discussion.
And I appreciate that. And I would have said something had it not been commented that they were existing. That was probably why it wasn't anywhere in the report. So, thank you.
Okay. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Please do.
Okay. In the case of number LDC 16-00076, Reno Self-Storage, 525 Gentry Way, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to recommend the Planning Commission approve the special use permit subject to the conditions, including the addition of Condition Number 10, which will designate the hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Sunday through Saturday. And I can make all of the findings.
And just for clarification on that, I forgot to mention it on that finding. It seemed a little strange to me recommending that the Planning Commission...you're making the motion, right?
I'm just reading what was printed.
Okay.
I didn't know if legal wrote that or if staff wrote that, so I didn't want to vary.
Can I get clarification on that? Did we need to say that? Because it seemed a little strange. Claudia? Did we read the motion there? I think it's supposed to say City Council. Okay. So we don't need to recommend to council for anything? Okay.
So I will modify what I just read into as a motion and remove the word "recommend" to Planning Commission to state, "I move to have Planning Commission approve the special use permit subject to the conditions, as I stated, that I can make all the findings on."
Thank you, Commissioner Wieski. Have a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Schneider?
Commissioner Schneider, I second that.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Good luck with your project. At this point, we are going to take a five-minute recess before we move on to Item 8.4. Take the recess.
Derek, Derek, can you come over here?
Do I have to come back, or can I just go home now? Can I just go home now?
It's okay that my kid's home with no babysitter.
I will bring the September 21st, 2016 Planning Commission meeting back to order and continue down our agenda to item 8.4, which is LDC 17-00007 Convention Center Project 4809 Kitsky Lane. And if I could have the applicant's representative come forward for 15-minute presentation? Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Scott Nielsen. I'm an Executive Vice President and the Chief Development Officer of Station Casinos. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to talk to you about our company and about this project. What I'd like to do is just kind of introduce our company to start with and talk a little bit about who we are and what we do. And then I'll turn the time over to Andy Durling for a presentation concerning the project and the specifics of that project. So if we can go to the first slide. I will. Thank you. Our company was founded 40 years ago this year. It was founded by a gentleman by the name of Frank Fertitta Jr., who is the gentleman swinging the hammer in that photograph there. Mr. Fertitta came to Las Vegas as a young man and began as a bellman at the Tropicana Hotel. Worked his way up through the gaming industry, through different levels of responsibility and trust. And eventually founded a property, a small business, a gaming business, off the Las Vegas Strip and out of downtown, that eventually became the Palace Station. Founded a very small business and started that business. And through, I think, 13 expansions, it ultimately became the Palace Station that we know today. His sons, Frank Lorenzo Fertitta, grew up in the family business and worked alongside their father and learned the business from their father. And then joined the company and ultimately took over the company in 1993 when they took the, when we took the company public. So we've been, we were publicly traded company from 1993 through 2007. And we recently became a publicly traded company again this year. They, they then took the company from, from one project, one property, Palace Station, and expanded it to where we are today, which is 19 properties. We have nine large properties in Las Vegas and 10 smaller properties. If the Nevada Gaming Commission, excuse me, approves our application tomorrow, we will, by the end of the month, acquire and operate the Palms Hotel, bringing our large properties to 10 large properties. This slide just demonstrates that we have a diverse portfolio of assets that serve a wide multitude of demographics, just to give you an idea of the type of properties that we own and own and operate. Essentially, we operate everything from the luxury properties, which are Red Rock and Green Valley Ranch, through our core station brand properties, to our value-oriented properties, which are the Fiesta Rancho and Fiesta Henderson. We also manage Native American properties. And then we operate 10 smaller properties, as I indicated, most of which are under our Wildfire brand. I think the important thing to note here is, and I think it's important as it relates to this project, is we don't do the same type of project in every location. We're not a cookie cutter type developer. We try to develop a specific project for a specific market and specific site, depending on the demographics and also the location. And we, we're very comfortable operating everything from high-end properties to much more value-oriented properties. We, the vast majority of our, especially our large properties, we have developed from ground up. We take a greenfield site like this site and we'll build a project. So we've developed over $5.6 billion worth of gaming projects around, in southern Nevada and also around the country. In addition to being experienced in terms of development, we also operate these properties. And this is really just to give you an idea of the order of magnitude of the types of things we operate. So we operate more than 24,000 slot machines, more than 4,000 hotel rooms, 62 restaurant venues. We also have a very active nightlife, convention and meeting space business. And we operate movie theaters and bowling. And we also operate live entertainment. We're one of the largest bookers of large, of live entertainment in the Las Vegas Valley. And so that's a very important component of our business. And we believe the entertainment experience that we're going to provide is also very important as it pertains to this project. So we're very excited about the Reno market, the, the growth of the economy here, the diversification of the economy here. And we've had our eye on Reno, as you probably remember, for quite some time. And we believe now is the appropriate time to, to come to Reno. So we're excited about this opportunity and we're very excited about this project. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Scott. Andy Durling, for the record, thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Just to get into some of the specifics for this project, what we're dealing with tonight is of three special use permit requests. The first is to establish non-restricted gaming use on this property, which is located at the northwest corner of Kitsky in South Virginia. Additionally, we have special use permits to modify the parking orientation requirements that are in the mixed-use zoning district, as well as reduce the floor area ratio from .33 to a minimum of .66. This property is located directly to the west of the Convention Center and north and east of the Redfield commercial properties that anchor the Kitsky and Virginia Street corridors. The site is zoned towards commercial within the Convention Regional Center, which is important. This property in particular, and this project, is unique in that it is not an establishment of a new gaming operation. This is the establishment of a former gaming license, the former turf club, which was displaced as part of the retract project some 10 to 12 years ago. In that relocation of the turf club license, the city entered into a contract, a relocation agreement, that specified seven degrees of non-conformity that could be continued with this property. Those degrees of non-conformity include that the original property was not zoned for the use. The original turf club was not zoned towards commercial. This property is. The previous use did not have any hotel rooms. That's actually the one degree of non-conformity that will continue with this proposal. There are no hotel rooms proposed. Number three, the previous use had no parking. And the new use would have to conform to basically current code with up to a 25% reduction. We are meeting code with a 15 and a half percent reduction in parking. The previous property didn't have a parking. It didn't have any parking lot landscaping either. Will, will, will comply with the parking landscaping now. The previous property was only a gaming use. It had no ratio of public space in there. The relocation agreement required that we have at least a one-to-one ratio of public space to gaming floor area. We actually far exceed that. We have over two-to-one ratio of public to gaming floor. The previous property had no street trees. We have street trees. The previous signs were in excess of code. We meet code requirements. So just to reiterate, of those seven degrees of non-conformity, the only one that is still maintained is the lack of hotel rooms. This property is 7.7 acres and will include 89, just over 89,000 square feet of building. Of that, 20,900 approximately will be dedicated to gaming floor area. It'll have a cinema, bowling alley, restaurants. We have under roof .27 FAR. The .26 FAR that's identified in the, in the legal description for this use is actually, does not include a second, potential second-phase restaurant. So that's where the difference is in that. We have 347 parking spaces, which I said earlier is a 15 and a half percent reduction. On the site, in the site plan that's shown now, north is to your right. So Coomly Lane is on the right. Virginia Street is on the bottom. Kitsky Lane is to your left. The, the building itself is oriented towards Virginia Street and towards the Convention Center. You received a lot of comments in the NAB, comments about the building orientation. And the building orientation actually meets code. What we're asking for is more that the parking that is located between the building and Kitsky Lane is, should be allowed due to the, the virtue of this site having free frontages. It makes it very difficult to, to hide that parking behind a building. Just to go through some of the aspects of this project that are appropriate for this location, we have the request to reduce the floor area ratio. But when looking at the floor area ratio in the context of the overall corridor, it is an appropriate scale and, and FAR to the surrounding properties. As I mentioned, the Redfield commercial properties to the south and west really dominate this area. They're in a .2 to .25 FAR. That's very indicative of retail development. That's very common. We are at a .26, .27 at buildout. So in your graphic, you see really the only two properties that currently meet the FAR in this area is the Convention Center and the Atlantis. Our building is an appropriate scale to the surrounding commercial uses. As you can see in this exhibit, our proposed building there shown in kind of the tan color is a similar scale to the surrounding retail projects to the west. Additionally, this building is oriented to meet code, as I said. Code requires a couple of different, there's kind of an either-or in code. And it requires that we either have 25% of our frontage, our street frontage dedicated to building, or that we have a dedicated primary pedestrian access to Virginia Street. That's dictated by the Convention Regional Center. We meet actually both of those. So in, in, with respect to the building frontage, we actually have 39% of our total, all three sides, all three frontages, is dedicated to building frontages. Additionally, this building is oriented towards pedestrian generators that consist of the Convention Center, the RTC Rapid Stations, which are just a quarter mile to the north, as well as some of the educational and community facilities that are included in the Old Town Mall. There were some comments about maybe orienting it toward the south, which we feel would be a negative to the pedestrian environment, specifically orienting this towards the intersect, the major arterial intersection of Kitsky and Virginia. And then further south of that, the I-80 McCarran interchange area is really not conducive to pedestrian movements, nor is it a good pedestrian environment. Additionally, we've provided the enhanced pedestrian routes that are required by code, as well as in addition to code. So on Virginia Street, in your lower right corner of the exhibit there, we have a large plaza area that goes to the front of the building on Virginia Street. We also have a condition that will require us to have an enhanced cross, pedestrian crosswalk at Coomly Lane. Additionally, in working with staff, we met the parking lot landscape requirements as we submitted, but in working with them, we decided to add additional trees and an additional pedestrian route that would tie in the Kitsky frontage now to the southern entrance of the building. So now both entrances to the building are tied with strong pedestrian corridors to the adjacent streets. Just to give you an idea of the project architecture, this is that frontage facing the Convention Center and South Virginia Street. So it has a nice, very nice architectural features, outdoor plaza, outdoor dining space. We're really activating the street with this frontage. Additionally, just looking at some of the other elevations, the south elevation emphasis on the entrance there. Staff did recommend some additional articulation on the west elevation, which is shown on the bottom there. There will be some signage that's not shown in this that would be on that elevation. But we're fine with the condition and will work with staff to identify appropriate architectural embellishments on those blank walls on either side of that central feature there. Again, looking at the north and west, or east elevations, I'm sorry, you get the sort of context of that really high emphasis placed on the Virginia Street frontage. Signage for this project, there are three main signs. The one on South Virginia Street and then one on Coomly and one on Kitsky. In working with staff, we were able to come to consensus on the design and height appropriateness of these. The main sign on Virginia Street is proposed at 48 feet and has a monument-style look, even though it is a pylon sign. It has electronic display and changeable marquee. The sign on Kitsky is 26 feet, has an electronic display. And the sign on Coomly, because it's more adjacent to and more in proximity to some nearby residential uses, kind of a quarter mile to the west, has just a static, changeable letter marquee. What's important, and I know that in your memo that you received today, Condition 9 was modified per our request by staff. It was important to clarify that while these were proposed as pylon signs, they have an appearance of being monument signs. It's just sort of a technical feature here that the, the construction methods of these signs is actually a pylon, but it's clad in the stone and stucco features to make it appear as it is a monument. So we're, we're content with the way staff has amended Condition 9. Staff also amended Conditions 1 and eliminated 5, in which we are in agreement with those as well. We do ask for the Planning Commission to consider one other modification, that's to Condition 2. And this is just to clarify again, because there are, there's some phasing associated with that extra restaurant that could happen in a second phase. So just to clarify, for the record, we would request that Condition 2 be modified to state, "The applicant shall apply for the first building permit for the project within 24 months from the date of the final approval and continuously maintain the validity of those permits, or this approval shall be null and void." Just again, asking for clarification in the phasing and then also an additional six months. A project of this size can require a little extra design work to get it to the finish line, to get those building permits. And so we ask just for a little extra time. We are in agreement with staff's recommendations and the memo as you received it today. And I would like to reserve any additional time I have for rebuttal and to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Andy. Jeff, welcome.
Good evening, Chair Gower, members of the commission. Jeff Borcard, Associate Planner, for the record. I want to thank Andy for the great summary, pretty much echoed my staff report. So I'll, I'll try to keep this quick and, quick and easy. So just to bring it back home to the location of the site, right across from the Convention Center, nearby numerous retail establishments. So what I wanted to do is highlight key conditions within the staff report. Andy already kind of went over some of them. The first being Condition number six, which discusses the lack of visual interest on that west elevation and adding some additional horizontal, vertical articulation and/or material and color variation. Condition number seven, which discusses better parking lot screening from the right-of-way. So with the addition of berms and shrubbery, a combination of both to screen those headlights, to make the parking lot sort of fade off into greenery. Condition number eight, which, the location of the bicycle parking currently, I don't know if I can use this mouse, I can, is right here on the plans. And this is exactly where the restaurant, the future restaurant expansion will take place. So Condition number eight discusses relocating the bicycle parking and the addition of additional bicycle parking. And Condition number 18 discusses the crosswalk, which Andy also mentioned. We'll have flashers. It'll be across South Virginia Street to connect to the Convention Center. There are other modified conditions, which was the removal of Condition number five. This is part of the memo that you received, the commission received today. Removal of Condition number five. Staff, the applicant, the city attorney's office agreed that the entitlement was not the appropriate venue for the completion of the relocation agreement. Additionally, revision, there was a revision of Condition number one, which reflected the vested rights in the relocation agreement. So it was just a modification of the language to reflect that relocation agreement. There was a revision to Condition number nine, which clarified the intent behind that specific condition, as Andy mentioned. It is, the construction methods are actually a pylon sign. But it functions and looks and appears as a monument sign, which is staff agrees with. So with that, there were all some, also some clarifications to the staff report, which discussed the acquisition history of the turf club license. So there was two attachments provided to you this evening. And there was a clarification on the RTC comments, which discuss raised medians. These were not for Coomly Lane. These were only for South Virginia Street. There were some NAB concerns, which Andy hit on as well. The lack of hotel rooms, building orientation, too much parking, traffic impacts. The original signs were too large, which the applicant has reduced them in size. And the pedestrian safety, which was addressed through the addition of a crosswalk. There was no public comment besides a letter received from Monarch Casino Resorts, which the analysis was provided in your staff report. With that, staff recommends for approval, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much, Jeff. Good job. We'll get back to you on the questions. Before we get to public comment, I'm going to ask for disclosures and start with Commissioner Snyder.
Commissioner Snyder, I have ongoing business with Wood Rogers unless recuse myself from voting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commissioner Reno, we'll jump back to you.
Yeah, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative at two different occasions, and met with the owner of the Atlantis.
Commissioner Johnson, actually, as did I, all of those comments.
Commissioner Gower, I visited the site and met with the applicant's representative.
Commissioner Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative. I believe there were emails, too, and, and spoke with other members of the public.
Commissioner Nowitzki, I visited the site, spoke with the applicant's representative, and spoke with a representative from Monarch Properties, Monarch Casinos.
Thank you very much. At this point, I am going to open the public hearing item on this particular item and ask for public comments. And I do have two public comment cards. If there are others, other than John Farahi and William Thornton, who would like to make a public comment, if you could please fill out a public comment card, that would be appreciated. So we will begin with John Farahi, and he will have three minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is John Farahi. I'm the CEO of Monarch Casinos. And I would like to thank you for giving us this opportunity to explain our position. We've been in this community for 44 years. And we started from that motel golden door to where we are now with 824 rooms and eight restaurants, about 60,000 square feet of gaming. And we have grown in this community to where our first expansion, becoming a casino, was when we tried to convert our motel of 142 rooms to a casino, full casino. And we were told that under the master plan, for regional master plan at the Convention Center, we had, we have to have had 300 rooms before we could have a casino. So even though we had 142 rooms, we said, "We understand the reasons." They said, "Our committee has made an extensive and large investment in that Convention Center that was, was built before we bought our property." And we complied with that and we built another 160 rooms. The first tower that we opened in 1991 to meet that 300-room requirement, to have a full casino. The reason we are before you today, again, that we feel this project is not the right project for that site. And under the, again, the regional plan, Reno regional plan for the Convention Center, one of the key issues is having rooms. of the key issues is having rooms. And we know that Convention Center has suffered for a long time because there's not enough rooms around that facility. And the Convention Authority, which I have the pleasure of serving on that board, just recently passed a five-year strategic plan. And that strategic plan was approved on June of this year. And I'd like to read from that strategic plan. It says, "Hotel vocability poses one of the biggest challenges in terms of attracting convention business." And this is, again, is in your packet there, information that said that was done by the Our issue is that...
Mr. Farahi, if you could just make a closing comment, we'd appreciate that.
I appreciate it. Our issue is that the agreement that was made on this property with River Central, I want to read on page 5, it says that, "Except as herein and hereafter provided, River Central acknowledges that execution of this agreement in no way limits the discretion of the city in the permit and approval process with respect to the site to which this displaced business is located." So the city has the power to say this is not the right location.
Thank you.
Thank you. I brought the, is in the packet, I believe, I hope the staff had put it in, in 2005, Station Casino got approval from this body, unanimous vote with rooms, that we would be more than happy to be all supportive of that project that was passed in 2005. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next up, we'll have William Thornton, please.
Yes, please.
And you can move it around if you need to.
My name is William Thornton. I own an equity interest in the Super 8 Motel, which is nearby. And I think John's done a good job, and he's answered the questions I had. So I want to keep in touch with the situation, but I don't have any question, anything else to say. Anyone have any questions for me?
If we do, we'll get back to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment period and bring it back to the Commission for questions. Questions for staff, applicant, or others. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. I'll run this one for Bill, bring you up first. There was some discussion throughout the packet about the traffic signal, or lack thereof, or modifications to the Virginia and Coomly Lane intersection. Can you clarify, is there a requirement for a light at that intersection?
For the record, Bill Goll, Senior Civil Engineer. The original traffic report for the application proposed a traffic signal at Coomly and South Virginia. In our review, and myself, the city traffic engineer and RTC review, the location at Coomly and South Virginia, simply, it does not meet the standards of criteria for a traffic signal. It's just, it's way too close to the existing signal at Virginia and Kitsky. Our fear is that that traffic signal could impact the signal at Virginia and Kitsky. And we don't support the traffic signal at Coomly and South Virginia. In their traffic report, they do, you know, have some loading on that, on that intersection, but it really isn't, it isn't a large number of trips, even in the peak hours, to that intersection. We feel like it will still function. I do know that the left-out at Coomly will not be as the best, you know, function ever, but it still will function fairly well with the project. And we don't have those issues that it would, that that light would create at Virginia and Kitsky. We do, however, recommend they do install the pedestrian flashers and the pedestrian crosswalk and put those, you know, that infrastructure in as part of their project. We do see with, you know, this project in connection with the Convention Center, that there would be a large addition of pedestrian traffic in that area. So we do, we do recommend that approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Nowitzki.
Thank you. Bill, before you sit down, can I piggyback off of that? I think Commissioner Johnson had another question, but, Bill, thank you for the pedestrian crossing, because that was a big issue that's been discussed on projects in that intersection before. Will the pedestrian crossing include striping on South Virginia Street that will designate keep intersection clear for vehicle traffic so that left turns in or out of whatever South Virginia, Coomly can move a little bit easier?
Actually, when we, when they do stripe that, they propose it right now at the south, at Coomly and South Virginia, at the south approach there, on South Virginia. If it stops right there, yeah, the stop bars for that crosswalk will be up at the north end. So we will have people stopping at the north. So that left-out could potentially be, you know, be a viable movement.
And the left-in to the Convention Center opens up and...
So, yeah, so, yeah, that would be a viable movement during the times when there is, the crosswalk is activated.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, do you have another question?
Actually, I was going in the direction of the crosswalk, so the question was answered. Thank you.
Commissioner Reno?
This is for the applicant's representative. As we had met, I had brought the question, and I hope you've done a little homework on it. This is one site that this could be relocated to. What other available sites? And I say that, are they limited? What is the limiting factor, and why this site for the relocation of the gaming?
Sure. We didn't dig, you know, really deep on that, just, you know, kind of general knowledge of the area, obviously. There are other properties, sorry. There are other properties around town that could allow, from a zoning perspective. However, that's only one element of site selection. Obviously, the ability to purchase, and in this case, it has currently been acquired years ago, so this is a property that they have and want to assign this license to.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Andy, can you show us on the diagram how the Cochrane Ditch runs? And what you plan on doing with the Cochrane Ditch? Thank you.
Sure. So the Cochrane Ditch, which is irrigation ditch common to, throughout our community, currently runs from Coomly Lane to South Virginia, kind of at an angle through the site like this. So we will be picking it up in Coomly Lane, piping it along Coomly Lane, and then along Virginia Street, and connecting to the pipe, the existing pipe that's in South Virginia Street. Cochrane Ditch, both upstream and downstream of this site, is predominantly piped, and we don't anticipate any issues in piping that. There is a condition that addresses that as well, that would require easements and everything that would be necessary, and permission from the Cochrane Ditch Company as well.
Does that look like there's going to be any problems getting that permission, or giving them the easement?
We don't anticipate it, no. Like I said, it's been piped along much of the length of the Cochrane Ditch, is in a pipe already.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Commissioner Johnson, I have a question for staff. Jeff, if you've got a moment? I'm looking at Condition Number 21, which is talking about reciprocal access agreement to essentially the parking area to the west of this project, which I understand what's what they're looking at there, that there's a direct parking lot connection between the two, and that is part of it, there would need to be. Would this project, based on the requirements that you've placed for both landscaping and parking, would it work if there was no connection between the two parking areas? In other words, there's nothing off-site that's required parking-wise, the landscaping that we're seeing, everything that's there? If that was, say, an undeveloped piece of land or a wall, this project would still be, would still meet the requirements that you've placed on it?
So you're asking if on the, if on this portion right here, if this were walled off, whether or not the project would still meet code requirements, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
And I'm not, I'm not proposing that, I just need to understand how this is working within the greater context of what's happening there. So I guess I will follow up just with Andy, if you can respond. Is there, what is the reasoning behind, I guess from a conceptual standpoint, I know that there's a huge parking lot there. Is there a reason behind the connection that you're looking at at that point?
Sure. This graphic shows a little better, because it shows the adjacent property. If you look, they have a kind of a dedicated drive aisle here, dedicated drive aisle in front of the building, the old Circuit City and Sports Authority, Circuit City, Sports Authority. And so those line up. And so from a, just from a site design standpoint, it makes for a cohesive project instead of two sort of standalone projects that turn their back to each other.
Andy, in your presentation, you had a map that had the FAR layout of the surrounding Can you just take a minute and walk me through that map one more time?
Sure. So this is, you know, GIS exercise to identify what the floor area ratios are of the existing built environment. Basically, it's a mile in each direction. So from Peckham at the top to basically Meadowwood Mall, the Meadowwood Mall Circle driveway access there to the south. So what we have shown here is the, is kind of the range settings, the major threshold is being the .33, which is required, is the goal in the Convention Regional Center. So the red properties are those properties that meet the .33 FAR. Orange properties, which includes the Convention Center project site, are .26 to .32. And then the yellow color, the light yellow color there is .21 FAR to .25 FAR. And the .21 to .25, generally, when we're looking at, you know, coverage for retail properties, typically, it's in the .2. You're doing well if you get up to .25 on a, just a traditional, you know, shopping center. So that's, it makes a lot of sense that those are in that range there. So we are kind of in between your common retail shopping center and what the goals are for the Convention Regional Center.
Thank you. Thanks for walking through that.
Andy, Commissioner Johnson, before you sit down, just to then follow along, looking at the FAR reduction that we're at, we've also mentioning as a part of, one of the items on this, is that there is a reduction to parking that's being taken as a part of your project beyond what would be required by code. But the reduction you're taking is actually less than what is code allowable. So based on the size of the facility that you have now, you could reduce the parking. Or hypothetically speaking, if the building was larger, it would require more parking, but you would not need to provide that, because there is a ratio reduction that you're allowed to make that would allow your building to meet the FAR of the .33.
So it's, it would be, it would be very difficult to meet the .33 and parking in a reasonable parking reduction. Obviously, it's a direct, you know, proportional, it's linear proportion of increased floor area is going to increase the parking demand, and then your reduction becomes a lot more, really. We've, this is, we feel right-sized for the property and for the use in the area. 15 and a half percent reduction, I think, is in that range where we can capture some walk-in traffic. We anticipate we're going to capture walk-in traffic from convention goers. But at the same time, and this is not a solely dedicated project to the convention, you know, activities, and we'll have local users, and we need to accommodate for the parking of them. So we feel 15 and a half percent reduction is appropriate. It's far less, I will tell you, far less than what Stations Casino's internal requirements are. So there's a, there's a little comfort there as far as this is, you know, on the verge of being too little for them. So if that helps you, it's the right-sized approach, rather than just trying to increase floor area and try and figure out how much reduction we need.
Based on the type of use that's proposed.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Nowitzki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jeff? And if, Jeff, after I ask my question, if you want to defer it, you can do so. And this may go to Claudia or to Legal. Can you, we heard during the applicant's presentation why this project is, should be allowed on this site without rooms. And it has to do with the old gaming license and the purchase, and a lot of legal things that I'm not here to try and understand tonight. My question to you is, is, was the way this project was presented and the way staff has reviewed it, is it appropriate to be placed on this site without gaming rooms?
That's a simple yes or no answer. The answer is yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Reno?
Can I ask Jeff to explain his answer of yes?
So we could go directly to the amended and restated relocation agreement?
I don't want to get down into the weeds, but just why exactly?
There was no hotel rooms originally associated with the Turf Club license. And that was part of that, one of those non-conformities that they could suck up into the agreement and take with them wherever they were to relocate it to.
I guess more important to question, under the policy guidelines, they talk about having hotel rooms in the convention area. Can you explain why this site shouldn't have hotel rooms?
So if this were a brand-new use coming in?
Okay, well, yeah, I guess, I guess, ask why this site, not transferring of gaming licensing. Why, why wouldn't we consider a site across from the Convention Center? Why shouldn't it have hotel rooms?
Per the master plan...
Right.
Under, I believe it's Policy CD9, which discusses the need for hotel rooms to support the Convention Center. If there were a new, without the relocation agreement in this case, if there were a new use being established on this site, we would require hotel rooms, the way that our code is written today, and the way that the master plan policies are written today.
If it's a new use?
Yes.
So you couldn't put in this site, I don't know, a big strip mall? Could you, could you do that in the location? If it met all the codes, could it be a strip mall?
Yeah.
It wouldn't have to have... Yeah, so retail, so you wouldn't have to have hotel rooms.
That is correct.
There are no other questions. Andy, you had a minute and 41 seconds from your 15-minute presentation. Is there anything that you wanted to summarize or respond to in that bit of time that you have left before we go to discussion?
No, I think, I think we've covered all of our items. Again, during the discussion, if you do have questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me ask one more question. Sorry, got Andy up there. As the applicant's representative, maybe the applicant would just address this, but is there any plans in the future for adding hotel rooms to the site?
Scott Nielsen for the record. Commissioner Reno, we always master...
Commissioner Reno, we always master plan our projects for future growth, assuming that they're going to be successful and we don't want to box ourselves in. But sitting here today, talking to you, there are no plans for hotel rooms there.
Okay, thanks.
Missioners, had a lot of good questions, a lot of good answers, good feedback. Would someone like to start us off on discussion? If not, I'm going to start off on discussion and say that, since I received the staff report, I have been waiting to discuss this with you and get your feedback and appreciate the opportunity for the discussion this evening. And when I first read through the staff report, I read through it, went down to the findings that we have to make, made it to finding E, which says, "The proposed site location and scale, intensity, density, height, layout, setbacks, and architectural and overall design of the development and the uses proposed is appropriate to the area in which it is located." After I read that, I went back and I read the staff report and I saw some analysis related to architecture, but I did not see anything related to the scale, intensity, or density of the site. Done a lot of thinking about it, read through the staff report again. And one of the things that stood out for me, well, there were two things. And one of them was why I asked Andy to put up that map tonight with the FAR, showing what the floor area ratios are for the surrounding properties. For me, that was fairly telling. Also fairly telling is actually the, the aerial image that came up after it and the distribution of parking areas in that, that general vicinity. I mean, there, there is a lot of just open space there dedicated to the automobile. We don't have to put it up, if it would help, we can, but. So it kind of puts me on the fence of saying, or in, in understanding what Commissioner Wieski was getting at with all of the legal ramifications of this and, and entitlements and agreements that have been made. But getting back to the question of this particular finding that we have to make, is this site appropriate? And the question for me was, okay, it's in, it's in a transit corridor, it's in a Todd corridor. We're, you know, supposed to be considering what Dan talked about at the beginning of the meeting tonight with, you know, emphasizing pedestrian spaces and, you know, pedestrian uses, bicycle friendly, walkability, here we are in a Todd corridor. And that's where my mind went immediately with this project. And then I have to tell you, I took a step back and looked at it and again, saw all that parking, saw the FAR and said to myself, you know, why are we holding this property to that standard when everything around it, except for the Atlantis and the Convention Center, is at a similar or less FAR? So that's where I sit, tilting one way or the other, sort of as the discussion goes along. So I would look forward to your input and feedback on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll jump in. I kind of saw it the opposite direction. I saw why, why in a transit corridor, a Todd corridor, why are we not requiring to get more intense? Particularly be, right next to a Convention Center. And we have these standards and I expressed it to, to the applicant's representative, why shouldn't we meet the standards that we've set forth to densify areas? And I can see the reasoning, I know if you expand the floor area, you know, it has to do with, with what the demand is in the floor area and the parking demands. But I kind of saw this project is not, it looks like it's not orientated for, for pedestrians, it's more orientated for visitors from surrounding neighborhoods. So, I mean, I'd love to hear more discussion on that, but I, I kind of saw it the opposite direction. Not to meet the other standards or low, but maybe they will come up to it.
Mr. Wieski?
Let me jump in.
Please do.
First of all, I would like to ask Claudia to clarify whether this is a regional center or a Todd corridor.
Claudia Hansen, planning manager, this is a regional center, which is connected by Todd corridors.
Connected by Todd corridor? Okay, so, so it's not a Todd corridor? It, it is a connecting point. It is a node at the end of a Todd corridor, which?
The bus rapid transit runs down Virginia Street to Meadowwood Mall.
And RTC is even, I mean, they've got stops on either end of this block. If, if you, so it's not, they don't necess, RTC does not necessarily have a stop even for this, off of South Virginia, for the shopping center. When I looked at this, I had similar thoughts. I was going back and forth, just as Chair Gower and Commissioner Reno stated. And then I looked at what the floor plan is and what the uses are. It's not just a casino. There's bowling alleys, there's theaters, there's restaurants. There's lots of different uses in here right now. Okay, so you've got a lot of different entertainment draws to this project. And when I started looking at that, then I, I thought to myself, you know, look at how much parking is provided for two big box stores, just to the west of it. They're short, the original design for those box stores was short time visits. There are going to be people in here going to, maybe to a movie or a show or bowling for several hours at a time. And if rapid transit doesn't get them there, because there's not a stop directly here because of the location to the corner, they're not going to have any choice but to drive here. And I, I thought the landscape engineer, or landscape architect, excuse me, did a good job of buffering with trees and plants. And one of the things that I would ask staff to do is to make sure that they're not all deciduous trees. That in the winter time, what's facing Kitsky Lane, there's some, some evergreens or pine trees or something in there to keep it green so that it, it's a nice mix, we're not looking at sticks for several months a year. But I looked at the interior uses and that got me through the findings and the options available in this facility. You can relate it to a lot of different things, but you could relate it to a shopping center or a mall, if you will, that has a, a movie theater attached to it, may have a, a small neighborhood gaming stop to it, may have restaurants to it. This is all just under one roof. That's how I made it.
Okay. Mr. Johnson? Mr. Johnson, I think, great comments, all of these. I think I struggled with a lot of those as well. But I, I, I think the one that I'm struggling with and it, I guess it was emphasized earlier tonight is actually finding B. The project is in substantial conformance with the master plan. This is, this is the Convention Center, it's a regional center. So we've, you know, it's a great question, is it a Todd corridor? Is it a regional center? It's in the regional center. The current master plan and the proposed master plan. And the description of that, that Convention Center district is one that is basically focused outward. It's focused on visitors. It's focused on the, the Convention Center as the draw and the support for that Convention Center. And I, I can appreciate hearing from a board member from the RSCVA who's basically supporting the master plan and saying that the Convention Center needs to be supported by the items in our master plan, which are hotel rooms, which is density, which is walkability. And so I understand, and I don't want to get into the issue of whether or not this project has hotel rooms. What I look at is this site, per our master plan, wants hotel rooms. And so is this an appropriate use in conformance with the master plan? That's the one, I struggle with it because in our master plan, it's a regional center. There's a lot of other overlays on this particular project. But this is a finding that I have to make. And if I'm looking at the master plan here, if I'm looking at the master plan moving forward, there's things that we want in this area that the single biggest piece of property is not providing us. So that's, that's the struggle that I'm having.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump into this? That's the same struggle I'm having. In fact, I went to look up the, the policy CD nine, ten, eleven, the ones. And I wish it would have been verbatim, verbatim in, in the staff report. CD nine, and I don't know if people have read this, but the city encourages the development of hotel rooms to support the Convention Center. These rooms should be located within a five-minute walk of the Convention Center property. This is right across the street. This is a prime lot to have hotel rooms. I mean, it is, it, it, it should have hotel rooms. And that's why I asked the applicant, is there any future plans? Because I could probably make it if there were future plans, but I don't think I can make it, given that there are no substantial plans to do this, to add hotel rooms. And if you look in the comments from the NAB, that's almost every comment. I, I think everybody commented, where are the hotel rooms? You know, this is a Convention Center, this is a draw, so where are the hotel rooms? The first project came in with a lot of hotel rooms, more than they, they needed. So, you, you know, setting aside the turf licensing thing, because I think that could be located anywhere in the city, right? Does it have to be this lot? And I don't think that this is the right spot for it.
Commissioner Gower, I'll chime in on that and following up on where Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Reno were going, I also pinpointed finding B, conformance with the master plan. And I think the, the challenge for me is that, you know, that this site has been vacant for a long time. And it's the, sort of the, the challenge of having development there and having, you know, what is proposed is, is, you know, looks like a very attractive, you know, nice project. It's the reconciling that with the substantial conformance with the master plan and the things that Commissioner Johnson and Commissioner Reno have alluded to. And I think the greater potential of the site to provide those amenities, I guess. You know, whether they're, you know, it's the amenities in terms of higher density, accommodation units, you know, something that's a little higher density, walkable, that is consistent with what is the vision for that location in the regional center. And in my mind, it is, it's, it's a regional center, but it's also located on a corridor that is part of a bus rapid transit system that's being promoted as, you know, kind of the backbone of the walkable transit oriented development movement in the community. So again, trying to reconcile that with the big box, you know, freeway, non pedestrian, non walkable elements that surround that site. I mean, it's a, it's a real challenge for me.
May I jump in?
Jeff, you gonna figure that out for?
I, I just wanted to, to hit on a point that, I'm not really sure which commissioner said it, but I think it was Commissioner Reno who asked, what could be built on this site with the current zoning standards? And if somebody were to come in today and meet the zoning standards for a retail establishment or a mixed-use development without hotel rooms, they would be able to go straight to building permit? Get a building permit, you guys would never see it, there would never, ever be hotel rooms. With this particular development and the, and what we've mentioned in our staff report, and I apologize for not putting the finding E on page twelve.
You haven't been there.
So this particular site has been designed in a way to accommodate future hotel rooms should they come about. And this particular use lends itself to future hotel rooms, whereas a traditional mixed-use development or retail establishment would not. And so that's something that we were considering as part of our analysis as well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in on that? I'm glad you said that because that's part of where I was going to ask if future phases are going to have hotel rooms. And I totally recognize that, like you said, we could have a retail establishment there forever without any future hotel rooms. I think this project, personally looking at it, it's, it's great, it's beautiful, it's everything. I just wish it had hotel rooms. But that said, I, I've been on the fence about this, I've been back and forth in my mind. You know, if we approve this, then we might get future hotel rooms. If we don't, we may never get hotel rooms. And so that's where, that finding B, is it substantially in conformance? I don't think as presented, it technically is, but it could be. And so I, I don't know. Thoughts, I guess?
Mr. Wieski?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank you for bringing Jeff up to the microphone because, okay? And, and I'm sorry that that project didn't get brought back to us or even a discussion of it from management. But that's not what they brought before us tonight. And so, yes, it's, what's in the master plan can be built there. This is one of those items. But there's a few other things that could be built there too, depending who the landowner is and what his idea of best development of that property is. It's for us to look at it tonight and say, does this meet the code for what is being proposed? Can we make the findings based upon what they are proposing, not what we want to see?
Mr. Johnson, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna chime back in on that because I think in, is it in conformance with the master plan? Master plan says we want hotel rooms there. That's not all we want there, but that's what we want there. So I guess that's where I'm still struggling with it, especially in the sense that?
Commissioner Wieski, so to prove your, to prove your point, Commissioner Johnson, the master plan would allow theaters in there. With no, it would, it would allow for a strip shop in there. And if the developer woke up this morning and said, Wood Rogers, we're not going in there with gaming? We're going to go in there and do a strip shop, just submit plans for a building permit? We would have never seen it.
And Commissioner Wieski, I don't disagree with you.
So, so it meets the master plan that we were supporting?
Commissioner Wieski, I just want to respond that you're correct, but what you're talking is zoning. I'm talking master plan. I'm talking, what is it that we as a community have indicated that we want there? That's the master plan. There's a development code and zoning code that tells us what can go there. I'm looking at it from the bigger picture that we're, we were looking at earlier tonight. What's the bigger picture? What's the structure plan of what we want? And so we have the responsibility to try to encourage that. And if I have to make a finding that says it's in conformance with the master plan, I'm not making the finding that it's in conformance with the zoning and with the allowable uses. It's that it's in accordance with what we as a community have master planned for that location. And that's what I'm struggling with. I totally appreciate the fact that we can have this discussion because it's not, as you say, a straight theater or a shopping center or something else that we wouldn't have to see. This, this to me is, is an example of what we're trying to do with the master plan and, and encourage a certain type of land use. So that's, again, that's what I'm struggling with. And, and I, I appreciate this discussion because it highlights the fact that if we, you know, is this the only use that's going to come there? No, but it might be the only use that comes before us that has the opportunity for this discussion. Nothing else that goes there may come before us. So to your point, we may not ever get hotel rooms, but we may with this project. So that's the, that's the challenge.
Yeah, Commissioner Reno, and that's where I struggle. That's, you know, and as I looked up some of these other things, CD eleven, the policy eleven, says the city should encourage activities and projects, which will support the Convention Center and increase tourism and convention activity. It's this increased tourism that I'm not sure that this project increases tourism. I don't think any people are going to come from out of state or just to go to the bowling alley or to the movie theater. So I, I wonder if that policy is being met too. And so I have, I have a struggle with item B. That's the one I had circled, I'm like, can I substantially be in conformance with the master? I'm like, can I substantially be in conformance with the master plan if these are the policies? Now, but I also agree that maybe we can approve this with the potential of hotel rooms in the future. And I could probably make that finding if I, if I knew that there was a great potential to have that.
Yeah, Commissioner Reno, I think that's a good line of reasoning, and I had that thought too of, you know, you think of kind of the evolution of development on this corridor. And while the, you know, the market may not be such that, you know, the demand is there for those hotel rooms now, you know, the, the demand wasn't there when the Pepper Mill was built, you know, a long time ago. But now it's, you know, a large casino with a lot of room. Same thing with the, the Atlantis site, as I understand it. So, you know, I, I am also hopeful, looking forward. Commissioner Hawkins?
Thanks, Chair. I'd like to ask the representative for Station Casinos one question.
Yes, sir. Scott Nielsen on behalf of Station Casinos.
Sir, does Station Casinos own any other property in Reno? If so, where?
Yes, we do. We own an eighty-eight park, eight, eighty-eight acre parcel across from Summit Sierra on Mount Rose Highway.
That's the only property at this time?
That's correct.
There's nothing in the works for accruing some other property downtown?
No.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gower, I'll just say too, that, you know, it's a challenge, a position that we sit in because we're not involved on the front end of these development projects. We don't have the luxury of being, you know, the developer or the landowner or, you know, providing our insights other than putting on to paper as, you know, helping Sienna and Brianna and Claudia provide input as to what we'd like to see in the master plan. Beyond that, our responsibility is a little bit limited. We don't get to see the opportunity until it comes to us in this format. And in this case, we are lucky to see it. So reconciling that, that fact as well, and just, you know, recognizing the position that we're in, I guess. There's no other, no other discussion. If someone would like to make a motion, we'll see where that goes. Commissioner Alievus?
Commissioner Alievus, I'll just make a comment. Kind of listening and echoing, a lot of this is quite interesting. I think I had struggles with those same findings and I guess as a citizen and lifelong resident, I think that the community's got enough invested in the convention center that we should like to see some hotel rooms there. I guess kind of back to the best examples, if there's a, a strip mall going in there or just a bowling alley or movies or restaurants, we're not here to make business decisions. So I guess that's how I reconcile and can make the findings is that, that there are other uses that may not be what we want either. And, and I think that they get around the hotel room requirement for the privilege license by the relocation agreement. So kind of stacking that up is how, how I can, can make the findings, and it may not be what I most would prefer there myself or, or what the, what the best business decision may or may not be, but that's not my decision. So I think as far as the, the special use permits and the zoning, I think may not be what we want, but I can make the findings.
Chair, as you take a look at my binder with all the bullets on it, I too was curious about everything going on, but I can also make the findings, so, thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to propose a motion noting that there are several changes to several Perhaps we could have staff help us with a list of the changes to the condition so when we craft our motion, we make sure to capture those. I have number one, two, seven, eight, and nine, and five taken out.
Check out, those are the only conditions that were recommended for change. One, nine, and five are discussed in the memo. Two was requested at the applicant's direction.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I can just make one more comment. And, and maybe I'll direct this back to a couple of the other commissioners who are able to make the findings. I, I guess the, again, looking at B, are we looking at it in the sense that there is substantial conformance? There's a terminology there, and I hate to be the linguistic expert on that, but that's, I guess, this to me does not meet the master plan, but is it in substantial conformance with the master plan in the sense that it is providing amenities in that area? I mean, this is, this, I'm still struggling with making this finding. And, and those of you that can make the finding and have wrapped your heads around this in a way that maybe I can't, I, I guess I'm just looking for a little explanation. I mean, if we've got conditions that have pointed out that this is what we want to see in the master plan, is it the fact that there's a lot of other things that makes it a substantial conformance? Or are we just looking at it in the sense of where we're at? Maybe, am I going terminology here that you need to clarify?
Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager. I was, it's a perfect example of why we have seven planning commissioners, because substantial is going to mean probably seven different things, or six tonight, but it's going to mean something different to each of you. And so it is up to you to make the findings on your own, what it means to you.
That doesn't mean I can't ask for discussion about it, which I think is what I did. But if nobody wants to discuss, then I'll let the, the motion and the other comments go through.
I was hoping that Claudia was going to have something that, you know, we could really...
Four point seven.
Yeah. We have to do it all on our own. Any other discussion? Entertain a motion at this point.
Commissioner Reno?
Commissioner Reno?
In the case of LDC one seven zero 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 seven, Convention Center Project four eight oh nine Kitsky Lane, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to deny the special use permit subject to conditions. I cannot make finding B.
Finding E?
B, as in boy. And particularly because there is no hotel rooms. So I don't think it's in conformance with the master plan.
Have a motion on the table? Discussion? Call for a second.
Commissioner Johnson, I will second that motion.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. That motion does not pass. Two in favor, four opposed. Commissioner Reno made the motion. Commissioner Johnson had the second. Commissioners Gower, Hawkins, Alievus, and Weiskie were against the motion to deny the special use permit.
Mr. Chairman, I'll...
Commissioner Weiskie?
Prepared to make a second motion? In the case of LDC one seven dash zero zero, zero zero seven, Convention Center Project forty-eight oh nine Kitsky Lane, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit subject to conditions, including the amendments and changes to the conditions as brought forward by staff and the applicant this evening. And I can make all of the findings.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alievus, I will second that and I can make the findings.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I would say that this project is a good project in its merits and while it did not meet my personal vision for that site, I do believe that because of the area around it, the existing development and our limitations and what we have the ability to approve here tonight, I can make the findings. I just want to put that on record because I was on the fence and I had some discussion both ways, but that's where I've landed. Planning Manager?
Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager, if you could go in a little bit more in depth in the findings, especially the ones that were the trouble spots tonight, just so we have that on the record, please.
You mean to say that I can make all of the findings and I agree with what's there? Isn't enough of a clarification? Based upon what our master plan allows, what the, this, the zoning allows, I feel this is a, a use that is compatible. And based upon findings A through H, they all have merit, they're all related to the project, and every one of them, I agree with that this project meets what our master plan and zoning ordinances are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. And the motion passes four to two. Thank you. Good discussion tonight. I will, shall I read the appeal? Going to read the appeal process. Any final action not including recommendations or failure to take action by the planning commission may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor, or a city council member, or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal together with fees must be filed with the city clerk within ten calendar days starting on the day after written notice of the action is filed with the city clerk. And if the tenth calendar day falls on a weekend or holiday when the clerk's office is not open, the appeal may be filed on the next business day. Thank you. To item nine, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. I will say that we had a meeting last week and we had a discussion on, or presentation from staff on the update of the regional plan. They had the planning commissioners do a little bit of a workshop or an exercise on some of the things that the commissioners thought were hot planning topics in the region. So we gave that feedback, had some discussion, and we have another meeting scheduled for next month. Staff announcements, number 10.
Claudia Hansen, Planning Manager, I just have a couple tonight. At the last city council meeting, Train Town Zoning Map Amendment was approved six to one. And the Boarding and Rooming House text amendment was approved seven zero. Those are our only actions that we had at the last city council meeting that were before you earlier. And tonight I would like to introduce Silas Scarborough, our new assistant planner. If you want to come forward and come say hello. Silas has been with us for a week and a half, so I just wanted to welcome him. And there you go, you'll be seeing him.
Do I have to say five things about me or something?
Sure, that'd be great.
Yeah, that would be great.
Thanks for offering.
I went to the University of Kansas. I have degrees in architecture and urban planning. I have no design background, it's just history and theory. Was born and raised in Kansas, never lived anywhere else until now. I'm a Kansas City Realized fan, and in my free time, I like to go dancing, so. Does that work?
That's great.
It works, thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Item 11, Commissioners Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. Move on to item 12, Public Comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Unless Bill wants to make a public comment.
Mr. Chairman, under public comment, I would just like to say thank you, commissioners and staff. Applicants are gone, but tonight, every agenda item needed discussion, it had discussion, it had great backgrounds, and I enjoyed it. Thank you.
Thank you. Ditto. Item 13, Adjournment. Make a motion.
So moved.
All right. Good night.
Good night.
How'd you manage to get the entire, like, staff?